Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Koch. I'm the Chair of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals. We are opening our meeting on Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand twenty-one at seven thirty P. M. I will have a handful of announcements, but let's call the meeting to order and then the official first order business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone would please rise and let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. That's even harder to do remotely than it is in person. A handful of announcements. The first thing I'm going to do is to recite the supplemental notice from the Governor. Everybody bear with me again, over thirteen single-spaced lines, so just buckle in for a minute or two. According to Governor's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law's Chapter Thirty A, Section Eighteen, and the Governor's July second, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and order requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of North Andover website, www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting only, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning in to North Andover Gov Cam Comcast Channel or Verizon Channel Twenty-Six or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your question or comment prior to or even during the meeting to our administrator, jenbattersby@northandoverma.gov. T E R S B Y at N O R T H A N D O V E R M A dot gov. It will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. Copy of the application and supporting documents are on file in the Zoning Board of Appeals, one-twenty Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, and may be viewed on the Town of North Andover website at W W dot north or M A dot. Have a handful of additional announcements. Reminding everybody that this is absolutely an unsatisfying and cumbersome process to be remote and doing this strictly by teleconference without visible cues. Remind everybody that we are on the telephone, therefore, and we are being recorded. So that's an announcement to make that anybody who is uncomfortable being tapped to be grasped. Now, this is a public meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. When you are not speaking, please, everybody, let's mute ourselves because paper shuffling, clicks of our keyboards or mouses, taps on our phones, and even breathing actually all adds up to distraction and makes things inaudible. And pray is the only sense we have here. On the flip side of that, on the other hand, when you are speaking, please get as close to the microphone as you can. Please speak articulately as best you can. The last thing is the Google Meet. Unmute and mute is a star six. Once you get past, you know, unmuting yourself or muting yourself with a star six, then you can certainly use the mute function that is built into your telephone. But in order to join in the very beginning, you've got to star six yourself in. Those are my handful of announcements. Jen Battersby, sometimes I miss things. Did I miss anything that's screaming to you?
No, you didn't.
Thank you, Jen. Next item on the agenda, so the second item on the agenda, is the acceptance of the minutes of January ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Paul. I do not have a copy of the minutes.
Apologies, those ended up being circulated by email, Alan. We'll have enough votes to get through it, but thank you very much for letting-
Okay, very good.
Thank you for letting us know you'll be out of that vote.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the minutes of January?
Is there any way that we can include those in the package next time, Paul?
There's always a way. There's just a function of actually getting there. Any other discussion?
Have we done a roll call or did I miss that?
Boy, that's a good one. Thank you. That's actually at the top of my sheet, but it's above my announcements list. So for the record, let's do a roll call. I'm gonna go here. Frank Killey.
I'm here.
Steve Seidey.
Present.
Michaelis.
I'm here. Sorry about that.
I get it. Alexandria Jacobs.
Here.
Ellen McIntyre.
Yeah.
Alan Kuscha.
I'm here.
Ron Fagan.
I am here.
Paul Koch. We have a full house. Thank you for that reminder. I think that was Alexandria. So again, returning to the second item on the agenda, the acceptance of the minutes. If there is no further discussion, figuratively looking up and down the table, if there is no further discussion, then is there a motion?
I move to accept the minutes.
I'll second them.
Motion made. Motion seconded. I will, oh, let's see. Alexandria.
Yeah.
Ellen.
Was that Alan or Ellen? I'm sorry.
Ellen.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Ellen. Allen.
Present.
Is that an affirmative? Are you approving the minutes of January?
No, I'm not. I don't have any, so how can I vote on them?
Absolutely right. I already forgot. Thank you for the reminder. Let's go down list. Michael.
Yes.
Thank you, Michael. Ron?
Yes.
And I am an I, so the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is, oh, golly, I have the wrong one printed, is Twenty-Five Dudley or Three Great Pond next?
Three Great Pond.
All right, Three Great Pond. Who do we have on behalf of Three Great Pond?
Good evening, Andrew Caffrey on behalf of Three Great Pond and Elaine Finberry. We're having issues getting our revised plans out of the engineering office, so I'm afraid I'm gonna have to ask your four barons for a continuance to the March meeting.
Brilliant. Thank you for that. The next meeting, I think we heard, is March ninth. So is there a motion? Well, actually, no, I'll look up and down the table. Is there any discussion on this? If there's no discussion, then may we have a motion?
I make a motion to continue this hearing until March ninth.
Thank you. Who is the second? I'm sorry.
Ron.
Thank you, Ron. Motion made and seconded. Again, doing the roll. Alexandria.
Oh, yes.
You. Ellen. Ellen McIntyre.
I approve. Yes.
Alan Kuscha.
Yes.
Ron Fagan.
Yes.
An I, so we are continued to March ninth. Please see Jen Battersby for any time waivers. Thank you very much.
Will do. Thank you.
And to the extent we're taking things out of order, let's do Twenty-Five Dudley. I am sitting here without a notice or an open. I know what to do. Are we actually opening? It did make the agenda. If this made the agenda, then we're going to need Mr. Clerk to read the notice. Is there a notice?
I don't have a notice for Twenty-Five what?
Twenty-Five Dudley.
I don't have that. I'm sorry.
Paul, we did not notice that because we had it on hold. We did not notice that.
All right, okay. So it made the agenda, didn't make notice. We are in charge, I believe. We have somebody for Twenty-Five Dudley. Would you mind introducing yourself for the record?
Hi, I'm Amy Almarico-Leclair for Twenty-Five Dudley.
Thank you. Could you let us know what's going on and then we will move this to March ninth?
We just need to revise some of our initial paperwork on the advice of Jennifer Battersby and Paul Hutchins, and so we're asking for a continuance.
Thank you very- to the extent that we need one, we will certainly be voting on one. Is there any, looking up and down the table, is there any discussion on moving Twenty-Five Dudley to March ninth? If there is no discussion, then is there a motion?
I will move to move Twenty-Five Dudley to the March meeting.
Thank you, Ron. Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Alan. Going up the roll. Alexandria. Alexandria Jacobs.
Yeah, yeah.
Ellen McIntyre.
Yes.
Alan Kuscha.
Yes.
Ron Fagan.
Yes.
I'm an I, so we are continued to March ninth unanimously. Please see Jen Battersby if we need any time waivers. Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda, I believe, is Three-O-Three Chestnut Street. Do we have anybody for Three-O-Three Chestnut Street on the line?
Yes, Attorney Rick Byers, representing Winslow Drive Realty Group.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to disqualify myself on this because I haven't been involved in any of these discussions.
Another reminder. Thank you very much, Mr. Kuscha. You are excused from this. There's going to be a vote tonight. Jen Batters, who will be?
Michaelis.
Okay. Thanks. Attorney Byers, do you have anybody else with you?
Brian Boyle from Winslow Drive. Yep, Brian's there too.
Brilliant. So it's the two of you, Rick Byers and Brian Boyle?
Correct.
I think this is where I just kind of throw it to you. Tell us where we are and where we're going on this one.
Yeah, if you recall back in November, we received a variance for the contiguous buildable lot. And then the building or house plans that were submitted when the variance was granted, we decided for a number of reasons that wanted to switch those plans out with some new plans for a smaller house within the same footprint. So we have submitted the new house plan, so we're basically just swapping the one house plan for another with, which didn't affect the variance that was granted. Rather than do a modification, we resubmitted everything over again with the new house plan.
All right, Joe, tell us a little bit about the new house plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So what happened was also to expand upon what Attorney Byers was saying. The plan that was on the approved plan was an old house, and it was a good-sized home, over five thousand feet with an in-law in the basement level. It's a large cape. Recollection is three of the butters had a concern about the size of the home. So what I did was I came up with a thirty-one hundred square foot colonial, well, it's kind of like a story and a half home. That's what I was going to be showing the board last January. But the original buyer from a year ago, who was a North Andover resident, Frank Rossi, he came back and wants to build a thirty-one hundred, well, just over thirty-one hundred square foot dipper colonial, but was not exact, it was not the plan that I had in front of this board last month, in January, so I had to ask for the continuance because we didn't, I did not have his plan in time to- So tonight, that's why we're in front of the board. So what's in front of the board here tonight is, you know, to substitute the plan from our approval in October. The footprint that this house will occupy is significantly less than the plan that was the five, technically fifty-five hundred square foot home. So this home is approximately fourteen hundred square feet smaller with a much smaller footprint. And that's the long and short of it. So basically, you know, we meet all the front, rear, side setbacks. We're actually even further away from the wetlands in the back. I mean, so it's, I think it's the type of project that I think everyone's looking for.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
For the plan? Sorry, Paul.
What's the question?
So the plan's from January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The blue is what we had approved before, and you're looking for the red, right?
That's correct. Well, no, 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 the blue, the blue, what's in front of you tonight, the blue is the plan that was approved by Conservation four years ago.
Okay.
So the red, as you can see, is, you know, it fits inside that.
But the blue is what had come in front of us before.
No, no, technically speaking, the blue never came in front, the plan that you, this board saw in October, it fit inside the blue. The blue footprint is the largest footprint, and that's the footprint that was approved by the Conservation Commission four years ago.
Okay, and the red is now what you're proposing?
The red is what we're proposing. Correct. And then I also hopefully make the packets because the plan, what we're proposing, is actually drawn by a W. A. Hurley and Associates for Frank McRossi. So that's the language we're looking to put on the decision, so there's no confusion, confusing of what gets built there.
Looking up and down the table, are there any further questions from the board?
I have no questions, Paul.
So just for my clarification, as I look at the diagrams, so the red, although the footprint is smaller, it appears to be closer to Hillside Road. Is that correct? I mean, therefore, the relief is a little more significant?
No, that's incorrect. No, the relief, I was never looking for relief for setbacks. So you have a thirty-foot setback and the bottom step is showing thirty-two feet. Oh, it's, I don't think that's really an accurate statement.
Okay. So the only relief you need is contiguous buildable area, right?
They already got that. Yeah.
Which got, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so is the driveway that you have proposed here, is that different than what was previously proposed?
No.
Okay, so you had proposed the same driveway with the blue outlined four years ago that went through Conservation and everything. Okay.
Correct. That's correct.
That's the only other concern I really have there is just, you know, whether that's a lot of blacktop on the area. But if Conservation's okay with it, then-
Yes, that's the same driveway. Correct.
Okay. And if I recall, when this went up in November, there was a fair amount of public commentary on it. Did we, did we get any fresh commentary on this? I know I saw a lot of things for another thing that's on our agenda, but I don't think I saw any for this one.
I don't think I've seen a lot of traffic myself. Jen Battersby, do you have any public comment to be read into the record?
No public comment.
Thank you, Jen. Any further questions from the board? All right, well, seeing and hearing none, and hearing from Jen that we do not have any public comment, then perhaps the board discuss amongst each other?
I'll move that we move to deliberation.
I will second.
Motion made and- Lost my role. I'll go up the roll. Alexandria.
Yeah.
Ellen McIntyre.
Yes.
Alan.
Allens are cused.
Oh, I'm not in on this one, Paul.
I won't remember, so forgive me if I ask again. I do have another note. I think that Frank is voting on this one, so I'll come back to him. Frank, shall we move to deliberation?
Yes.
Ron? Ron Fagan?
Yes.
Paul, I think the decision was that I was gonna be voting on this one. I'm not totally positive, but I think that was-
Oh, yeah, that's- That's today's, my old, my old note is old. It's from January, I guess. Okay, well, then you'll be voting on the substance of the matter rather than the procedure.
Sure.
Thank you for the reminder. Anyone else have any reminders? Got a sieve up top of my cranium here. So board, what kind of deliberations do we have amongst ourselves in front of everybody?
Well, I would just offer that it looked good before. It was approved before. It's smaller now. I think that was what the request was, so it looks good to me.
Yeah, if I recall, the previous commentary on it was that the proposed house is much larger than the previous dwelling, and it remains so. But it is less than the one that had been previously proposed, so I guess, you know, it's somewhere in the middle there.
I'm aligned with that thinking as well, Michael. Any other comments from anybody on the board? Again, looking up and down the table. All right, seeing and hearing none, then we will need a, we're gonna need a motion of some sort, Mr. Clerk. And I'm not certain exactly how to do it other than to create a motion to approve a modification and then just list the new plans that-
Is it a modification or was it resubmitted? I thought it was resubmitted.
We have a notice? We have, if we have a notice, then of course, Mr. Clerk should recite that. I don't have a memory. How did we open this? Does anybody remember how we opened this thing?
We did not recite a notice for this at the opening.
I don't believe that's correct. I want to say we did for a modification.
Correct.
Because I remember there being the whole, I could swear there was a conversation of, well, how do we do a modification? This is all new to us.
Can someone look at the minutes?
Oh, look who's smart. Well, then I'm reading. Yeah, the applicant is requesting a modification of previously-
Yeah, so-
We opened it as a modification.
Yeah, it's on a variance form, which certainly makes sense, but this is, this appears to be just a modification because it's so slight. Mr. Clerk doesn't have the minutes, so perhaps- Alexandria, are you looking at the minutes from?
January?
Yeah.
Yes.
If you are, then do you want to make, would you mind making the motion?
I do not mind. I might butcher it a little, so just work with me here.
It'll look great on paper, I promise.
As long as it looks great on paper. So I make a motion. Are we ready for the motion?
I think so.
Make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a modification of a previously approved variance pursuant to Town of North Andover's zoning bylaws, Section one ninety-five dash seven dot one A for contiguous buildable area, CBA, in the R-three zoning district for the purpose of reconstructing a single-family home on a vacant lot. Specifically, applicant has requested CBA needing a relief variance of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen square feet, i.e. twenty-three percent. The CBA proposed is thirteen thousand thirty-two square feet, i.e. fifty-two percent, and the CBA required is eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, i.e. seventy-five percent. The modification being sought is to amend certain plans and exhibits to reflect the reconstruction of a smaller, single-family home. The previously approved home was approximately five thousand five hundred and thirty-five square feet, and the modified, single-family home is three thousand one hundred square feet.
Believe that we're just citing their, I think I'm just seeing plot plan, the proposed plan dated June and-
So referencing proposed plot plan by the Winslow Drive Realty Group dated January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, which is one page, and architectural design by W. A. Hurley and Associates dated two eleven, two thousand twenty. Wait, that can't be correct. Sorry.
Maybe I'll interrupt, ask Attorney Byers, correct. Are we inserting from February eleventh, two thousand twenty?
The, I'm sorry, what was that, Mr. Chairman? I didn't hear.
So what I'm, we're just looking to make the motion to reference the plans. We're certainly seeing the proposed dated January thirteenth, but I believe that also there were included some architectural drawings.
That is correct.
Those are, and those- Yeah, dated February eleventh, two thousand-
Yes, two eleven, two thousand twenty. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pages A-one, I'm assuming A-two, A-three, and A-four.
Motion made. Is there a-
Can I, there's an A-five and an A-six, A-seven, A-
Okay, so I had the wrong one. It's not dated two eleven. I don't see a date on, is it Amanda Robichard?
No, that's the original architect.
No, it's W. A. Hurley and Associates.
Okay, then I am, I am missing page. I don't have anything after page four. I apologize.
They don't have the structural. You have what you need, I think. I think the motion's fine.
I agree. I don't think we need to know what A-five and A-six are.
Correct.
We just want to make sure we got the right ones.
We're all on that. Oh, motion made. Is there a sec?
I will second.
Boys, I'm sorry. Who made the second?
That was Ron.
Thank you, Ron. So going up the roll, Michael.
Aye.
Alexandria.
Aye.
Ellen McIntyre. Ron Fagan.
Aye.
I am an I, so we have approvals five zero to modify the plans. I think that finally closes that one. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheen.
Next item on the agenda appears to be the new public hearing of double-oh Beachwood Drive. Mister, we actually want to confirm, we have an applicant in the room?
This is Jason Hill from TF Moran, I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, thank you very much, good to have. Let's open the hearing, Mr. Clerk, would you mind reading the notice?
It'd be my pleasure, sir.
Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Albacato Limited Partnership for property at 00 Beachwood Drive, MAP 34 parcel 50, North Andover, Mass. 0145, in the CDD dash 3 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195 dash 7.1A, for contiguous building area, CBA, in the CDD dash 3 zoning district, for the purpose of constructing an enclosed three-story self-storage facility. Specifically, the applicant has requested a relief variance of 3,184 square feet. The CBA proposal is 78,491 square feet, and the CBA required is 81,675 square feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review by appointment only at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Tuesday, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM. And Friday, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Clark, Jr., Esquire Chairman.
Oh, and they love you in the balcony. Thank you, Alan.
My pleasure.
Now that we're officially open, uh, I'm, I'm sorry to do it to you, but one, one more time for the record, would you mind letting us know who is appearing, uh, the applicant?
This is Jason Hill, I'm a civil engineer, project manager with TF Moran. Um, I'm here with some others, I won't, um, I'll bring them in if necessary to answer questions, um, but I'm gonna basically just wanna present the application and handle any questions that you may have, so. First, I thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the North Andover Zoning Board of Adjustment for hearing us tonight. Albeit through, uh, this platform, it's different than in person, but, um, we appreciate the opportunity to meet with you, uh, to hopefully get this project moving forward. We're planning on, um, subsequent to, uh, any approvals that we're, that we're seeking tonight, which is just for the CBA, contiguous buildable area requirement, uh, we're planning on submitting, submitting a special permit site plan application with the town, um, and going through that process, with hopeful construction in, um, this year, obviously. As soon as we can get through all the permitting and such, but, um, so we understand there's steps that are, this is basically the first step of several, um, but it's an important step, obviously, so. Like I said, um, I'm here on behalf of the applicants. This is the property that's across the street from Ozgood Landing. Beachwood Drive, which is, it's basically the last undeveloped parcel on Beachwood Drive. It's in the CD3 district. 2.8 acres, it's vacant, it's a wo- wooded property, it's right at the south, southwest quadrant of the intersection of Beachwood and Ozgood, uh, road. So it's 2.8 acres, we're looking to develop this for a 90,000 gross, barefoot, climate-controlled self-storage facility, and this, with a, including a small leasing office, uh, with, um, parking spaces for, with eight parking spaces for the new tenants. Additional parking for existing tenants is provided within the gates around the periphery of the building. We've submitted a, 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 a site plan package, uh, to you, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it. That is the scope that's outlined, um, so the use, which is permitted by, by right, however, we're seeking relief from the contiguous buildable area, which was formerly revealed, that's been mentioned, forementioned. Brief history, and I don't wanna talk too, uh, this is also doc, in the documents before you, a brief history of this parcel, um, is such that, uh, the CBA requirement came into the ordinance, North Andover zoning ordinance, I, I believe, in the mid 1980s, mid to late. This lot was created in 1994. There's a plan, the, it's called, entitled the division, definitive, definitive subdivision plan, which is Plan Number 12902 in the package, and that was a conforming lot under the ordinance. Subject to a, uh, subsequently, in the 90s, they performed a lot line adjustment plan with the, uh, Easter Leo Butter, um, which inadvertently rendered, via the, the lot line adjustment, it inadvertently rendered this parse, subject parcel non-buildable by way of insufficient CBA. It's a minor, uh, uh, we're, we're, we're under by, uh, the CBA, minimum CBA by a minor, 3% or around 3,000 square feet, uh, in, in all. So that's why we're here, obviously, tonight. I have submitted a written response to the conditions of the, the zoning ordinance relative to the variance. I will defer to the board as to whether you'd like me to go into the details on those conditions, or just rely on the written documentation. And I'll, so I'd like your advice on how you'd like me to proceed at this point. I can either open it up for questioning, or, uh, go through those conditions.
I, I have some questions. So I, so my question is, aren't you creating your own hardship? When this was done, you created your own hardship, so even though you considered a minor 3%, can't you go back to Lot 2A and get that 3% from 2A? You created an unbuildable lot, and I, I can't imagine that what they said, well, we're gonna create this and make it unbuildable, I, I can, I can imagine that they knew that, what they were doing when they were creating the lot lines. So for me, it's hard to get my head around that it was an unbuildable lot created by accident. So, so those are my issues that I have with this.
I think that, um, I wasn't involved in the process at that point, but, um, by virtue of making the required adjustment, the town was actually asserting that the lot was compliant, because they couldn't approve that lot line adjustment with a non-compliant law. It would be, they would have forced them to go to the zoning board. So it was basically a, I think it was not checked at that point, because it would not have been a legal lot line adjustment. You can't create a, by the nature of the action, you can't physically, legally, as a town, create a non-conforming law without any specific relief at that time. So it would have had to happen at that time, and that's why it's, this was a unique situation where I think it was missed. And, uh, it's a small amount, and then also the Leo Butter, who is basically an office park. Uh, they basically developed their parking lot to within five feet of the property line, and they have a septic system. A lot of improvements that are very proximate to the subject property. I don't believe it's feasible to alter that lot without significant, uh, potential zoning issues there. So those two reasons, um, prove that this was a, or prove, those are my, our thoughts on how this was an inadvertent action. Because the town can't, uh, for those reasons I've just stated. And I'd offer that as a response to your concern. We're also bounded on the other three lot lines, so we have four lot lines, so rec, basically a rectangle. We have Ozgood Street, we have Beachwood Drive, we have this Wetlands, which is like, there's a, a perennial stream, and then we have one, one, basically landlocked butter, who's the, the butter you're referring to. So there's no alternative of butters that we can, uh, seek, which also makes this a unique, um, proposal.
Are there, uh, four different owners of the, of the lots?
I'm just kidding.
Are there three different owners? That four, is it four lots?
Well, no, the, um, to the, to the north is, uh, Ozgood Street. Highway Lake 125, uh, to the east is Beachwood Drive, the right-of-way, so there's a right-of-way, a, a public right-of-way, or it's private or public, I believe it's a public right-of-way. And then to the east, uh.
Is Lot 1, 2, and 3 owned by three different people? That's my question. Lot 1, 2A, and 3, are they owned by three different people, or one entity?
Lot 2A and 3. Where's Lot 2A and 3?
I'm looking at a plan that you submitted, um, on Beachwood Drive.
Let me see here, I just was looking for reference purposes, is that a? Lot 2A and Lot 3.
So I drove down there, and those lots, they have, I'm gonna say, office buildings or in them, it seemed to me, as though they were utilized, they were developed. Is, is that not the case?
I, I'm just curious if it's the same owner, that's all I, I'd like to know, do, do.
I'm just trying to find Lot 2, I just, excuse me, I'm sorry, I just don't know which lots, I'm just not looking at a plan that shows those lots.
So you submitted three plans that have that, so this, this is the plan that you were, we submitted in your package. So those plans, those lots are on your plan that was submitted for you, so.
Do you know the name of the plan?
This was the Alfred, I mean Alfred, uh, Conterio and Jean, they, it's, it's their plan that we're looking at.
And by Christian Sergi, uh, one, two.
Is this the plan from 96?
Yes.
Can you unpack it?
I'm not getting it, I'm just trying to understand what we're looking at. Okay, lot, plan that's Conterino, Alfred M. F. and Jean A. M. Conterino, prepared by Christian Sergi.
Yes.
Okay, so that plan from 96. Yes, this was a lot line adjustment between common owners. And that's the lot line adjustment plan that I referred to, that inadvertently rendered Lot 1A to the.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask my question again, is Lot 1, Lot 2, and Lot 3 owned by three separate entities? Or is it by one entity?
Lot 3. I don't know, Lot 3 is not, it's not labeled on here, it's, it's in a budding property, so let's see.
Can someone else, am I looking at the wrong application, or, I mean, is this not?
I mean, it's, this is a plan for, thanks.
The butters list, uh, list Albacato Beachwood as one of the butters. I'm not, that's the same.
I, I'm not sure my question is as difficult as, as Mr. Hill's making it, I just wanna know who owns Lot 1, Lot 2, and Lot 3.
Okay, Lot 1A, I believe you're, is now called Lot 50, which is the subject lot, which is owned by Albacato. Lot 2A, I'd have to go back to where a butters list, uh, uh, it's owned by a different entity, I believe, but. Hold on, we do some, we do some legwork, this is throwing me off a little bit, yeah. Existing conditions plan. Yeah, so I think you're referring to MAP 34 Lot 50 and MAP 34 Lot 51. Those are Lots 1A and Lots 2A on the 98, 96 plan map. So Lot 1A is owned by Albacato Limited Partnership now, MAP Lot 2A, the former Lot 2A, now it's called Lot 51, is owned by 45 Beachwood LLC. So there's none, there's, they're not common owners.
Thank you.
And then across the river, there's another property that's owned by Service Berry LLC, that's across the Wetland. You're welcome.
When that lot line adjustment was made, was it made for the purpose of allowing, um, Lot, um, Lot 2A, to give it the size it needed to, for the building and the, and the site work that were required for that? So was it, was it done for the benefit of that of the lot?
I'm assuming based on the layout of that office complex, that comes, basically the parking lot to, to that existing office complex, comes to within five to 10 feet of the current property line. So, uh, that's my understanding of the history of that transfer, is that that developer needed that land to fit out his program. That was the reason for the exchange.
It doesn't, but by, by making that adjustment, doesn't, didn't they sacrifice the buildability on Lot 1A? Didn't they give that up by benefiting Lot 2A?
No, there, there was a legal subdivision or a legal lot line adjustment. The town could not have approved a non-conforming lot without, you couldn't have, by doing the lot line adjustment, they could not have legally, uh, created a lot that was non-conforming without the appropriate zoning relief, which never happened. This was an inadvertent, uh, act, action, it was just never, or must not, never been checked on Lot 1A as to what the buildable area was. Uh, that, that, that would have legally avoided that property, that subdivision, you can't create a conforming lot.
Changing the lot line wasn't, was not inadvertent, though. That was intentional.
Correct.
They did, they did that for a purpose, to make another lot more buildable.
Yes, but rendering the lot as.
Right, at the, at the expense of Lot 1A.
Yes.
But now, but now they're trying to gain back all the rights of 1A.
No, we're just wondering, we're basically just to establish that 1A is a buildable lot, which, um, it, it, it is not by way of the small shortage that it is within the, it doesn't, it's shy of 3% of the, of contiguous buildable area. So it's not buildable for any use because of this inadvertent adjustment. Basically took, uh, uh, an additional, can take, it took some buildable area out, and it was never checked properly. So it should have, it should not have never, uh, you cannot create, the, the, the town cannot have, would not be able to legally create a non-conforming lot, and by virtue of making the subdivision, they did. It was just an accident.
The, the, the town didn't create the, the lot, the, the proponent at the time who did the subdivision proposed it. The town may have approved it, uh, without catching that, but it was some proponent who came in to make a subdivision change. So the other ones, it, there was nothing inadvertent about that, they didn't mistakenly move a property line. They intentionally submitted a plan, or it wasn't inadvertent to move that property line, that was intentional.
Yeah, we were just trying, my understanding is that there was, uh, they were just trying to help the butter establish his business, they didn't understand, um, that they, uh, the whole, and it was never brought up, in my opinion, or understanding of the process, that the buildable area for Lot 1A was never tested or checked that I have seen in any records. So it just such happened, now that we have this one piece of land that's, has a very sliver of, um, under the GF. Under the GF, the CFC. The requirement, and we're just looking to develop it with a a reasonable use that's permitted by right. So we're looking to do, which I think is a benefit for the town, for my client and the public, and that this is a public. The actual, there's a public need for this use, AKA, you know, gonna build it, so I think it's a benefit for all parties and. And just looking to have this uh this uniqueness in this transfer of land just uh. Cleaned up by the variance and so we can go forward and develop the parcel. Uh like I said, a permitted use, it's a, it's gonna be a good use, it's gonna. Bring a taxable parcel onto the tax rules, generates low traffic, there's no impact on the school district. The low impact on any community resources, it's it's a good deal, I think, for the town.
Well, there is a, there is a storage place right down the street. So it's not something unique to the area.
I didn't say it was unique, I said that there's a public demand for the use. And so we're looking for those, we'd like the town to help uh become a partner and allowing this to. Develop this parcel in legal accordance with all the other regulations, that's all. It's a low demand on traffic, it's a low generator, uh no, obviously no residential component. So it doesn't demand a lot of the the community's resources, but it also will bring a good. It'll bring a nice. Developable industrial flex property onto the tax rolls and it'll be a benefit to the town. So that's why we're here, is just to look for your approval so we can uh proceed, you know, with the planning board process and develop this property.
And you're saying nothing of any size can be put on that?
That's correct. It does not, it's not, um the buildable area calculation is derived from the overall tract size. And you're um required to remove the uh wetlands uh conservation district uh area. From the calculation and your result resultant is a seventy-five percent. Minimum, so there's, this is nonbuildable because it does not uh that is, it's on the current criteria, it does not. It's three thousand, three thousand square feet short of the minimum buildable area, so no use could be constructed on this parcel. That it currently exists. It's bounded on two sides by streets, it's bounded on the third side by a a wetland. And the the lot two A, which is the the lot, the adjustment that we just talked about, their parking lot is to with five to ten feet of our property land. So they built out their, you know, use, it's it's not a feasible, I think, alternative to. Adjust that law. And so we just, our building.
Fairness, that that was done purposely and obviously nobody thought about wanting to sell this land down the road and having something built on it.
I'm not gonna speak.
I mean, it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate, but it's not something that. The town, like I said.
Build to develop a law, I don't think if you, the um Alco group knew they were getting a nonbuildable lot, they would have done it. It's obvious they wouldn't have, it was a mistake, it was not caught, and we're looking to go through the legal bouts.
Well, isn't it, it was an intentional move that is now being realized was detrimental to the property. Is really what it was, cause an accident would be, they thought the lot line was farther over, so they built their parking lot, which wasn't the case, which has obviously been stated already.
Um well, they uh. We were unaware of this and the town never required a calculation that I'm aware of that would produce these results, so it was just. Uh something that occurred and. And I think that it's. The building program itself or like actual what we're looking to do on the property with the building. Like it can clearly be constructed. The the site plans that I submitted demonstrate how we're using the property, you know, to build on it. Such that it's, we're providing adequate parking, we're providing adequate utilities in septic. So the actual nature of the buildable aspect answered by the actual site design. And so we're simply asking that this factor of seventy-five percent. In this case be reduced to seventy-two percent because of a unique condition that the owner was unaware of. That ended up rendering the parcel nonbuildable. And I don't think it's in anyone's interest to, it's not in the town's interest. Idle part, this this property has. Said idle for a long time, obviously, it's not developed, idle properties. Either the idleness, it's a dog clearly within a portion that they that you'd like to have developed. For tax purposes and otherwise, idle property, uh idle properties by the nature of their idleness are not deemed in the public interest. So the development of this parcel is in the public's interest. For that reason as well, I I didn't touch on that application, but I'd like to submit to you verbally. That the removal of an idle taxable parcel. Which has been on the record for a while is is also in the public's interest, so. That's that's all I have to say, and I appreciate any. Anything that you.
When was the lot line moved?
Nineteen ninety-six.
When in nineteen ninety-six? You know?
This plan here, uh the Conterino plan is the plan, it's dated uh July seventeenth nineteen ninety-six. It was approved by North Andover Planning Board on August ninth nineteen ninety-six.
Okay, so the deed that you provided shows that the property was purchased in December of nineteen ninety-six. So then this was already done at the time. That the land was transferred. I mean, it sounds as if not all of the. Keys were crossed and dots, eyes were dotted to realize what was being purchased.
Well, I mean, you can't buy a parcel that hasn't been approved and recorded, so the fact that the plans are earlier than the. Purchase is common because you have to subdivide the land, has to be approved, recorded, and then you have to market it or whatever the case is, so I don't. See it.
And there's a due diligence, there's a due diligence on the purchaser's responsibility to be fully aware. And they had every ability back in nineteen ninety-six, and I understand they might not have been thinking about this, they had every ability to sign a P and S contingent on getting zoning. And they would have realized at that point, depending on what the zoning was.
There was nothing flagged, it was it was approved, it was clear, it had happened. It wasn't a a question, it was approved by the planning board. So there was no.
What was approved by the planning board?
Lot line adjustment.
That's not what I'm talking about, what I'm talking about is. The deed you provided to us is dated December nineteen ninety-six. So the purchaser could have done their due diligence, could have done a P and S contingent on getting approval from zoning. I'm not talking about the lot line being approved.
They, there was no, there was no zoning relief necessary, that had already been done. The act that the lot was created, it didn't need to be created through zoning, it existed, it was recorded.
And had they done something then when the zoning was different?
The zone, nineteen ninety-six, the zoning has been in place. This this section, which I talked about in my application, has been in the ordinance since, I don't know if it's ninety eighty-six, but it was in the eighties. So this was predates the development of these laws, it was just a. It had been somehow, it got through the filters and that's all we're at, we're not trying to be sneaky, we're just. This was created, I think I talked to Jennifer. At the zoning office and I did a little bit of research, I believe this came into play in the eighties, I think the late eighties. And this original subdivision before the lot line adjustment. This was subdivided, I think in ninety-two or ninety-four uh to create the basically the Beechwood Drive subdivision. And then that established all of these, whatever several lots on Beechwood Drive is conforming. And then this subsequent, so those were all legally created, the original lot one A. Was legally created by the original Beechwood subdivision. And then this adjustment was legally created by the planning board when they approved the lot line adjustment in nineteen ninety-six. And there was no.
You can't come after, you can't come after the planning board for giving the planning board what the applicant applicant was asking for at the time.
I'm just.
I mean, no, it should have, it should have been picked up on, but obviously nobody was paying attention to one A. And I still go back to. The person who purchased one A afterwards. Didn't pick up on it then either.
I just don't understand how someone buying a property that was already created and legally registered would go and look. There there's no causality for them to do a zoning review to check on a parcel that's been legally created and recorded, is conforming to the ordinance. That is not. Uh realistic and I don't, I reject that that someone, that that type of activity would be a part of that process. So this was a simply a mistake. We certainly didn't expect, you know, we didn't, um no one, I don't think the town included, the owner, the town. Uh intended on doing, intentionally creating this lot, there was no mechanism to check that. It was intention, uh by the nature of the planning board approving the lot. That is that basically. Conditions that that lot is conforming because the planning board doesn't have the authority to approve a subdivision of a lot that doesn't conform to the zoning ordinance. So that activity has basically left us where we're at today. And uh just trying to develop this piece of land, uh we're. You know, um three percent short, you know, it's just on numbers, but if you look at how we've designed the site. It's clearly buildable because we can provide the required parking for our use and uh all the utilities and septic system. That's required to actually build this without looking at just numbers on the table, if you look at the design. Then uh clearly buildable and can, you know, conforming to most of the site plan regulations, so that's.
I I know the planning board and I know who was on the planning board in ninety-six. I just can't wrap my head around it that those members intentionally do this. Cause you had some heavy hitters that were on.
They didn't intentionally, they unintentionally did it, this is my, is our point, it was unintentional.
But I I can't see them missing this, to be hon, to be honest.
I'm not gonna speculate on nineteen ninety-six planning board in north, I'm sorry, I.
We don't, we don't have to speculate on it, but but we. You seem to be putting the blame on the planning board for approving it. But but it was, it was the owner of the land who uh presented this to them and and wished to have this done. They made the mistake. The owner isn't necessarily on the planning board to catch all of their mistakes. Um and it doesn't let them off the hook. They they benefited, the owners at the time of both of these lots benefited from some trade of land. And now they're coming back, and now they're coming back and they're saying, well, we benefited when we gave them the excellent land now then. And but we still wanna get, have all the value for this other lot that we.
But the board approved, the board approved them a legal lot by the creation of a lot one A, it's a legal lot.
Well, when when when, when they, when they presented the plans to the planning board, they should have had as their own zone, they should have. Identified that to the planning board, so that would have been, it would have been caught. That 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 own, that onus is on the landowner.
Yeah, it's on both.
And and now, and now we're trying to come back and say the town has to make up for it.
Yeah, I I understand your position, but I do know that they were not, they would not have obviously rendered two, three acres of. You know, developable commercial land to the wind, you know, without, you know, uh consultation. And the board should have made the, probably made the calculation come through, but I, you know, so I just ran a tough.
I don't see that being, I don't see that being the case. My assumption is that the planning board probably was focusing on the one piece of property that was in front of them that the applicant put there.
Lot two A, I agree with you, yes.
So it wouldn't have been a planning board making the numbers work or anything like that, I mean, you can't expect. Any board, whether it's zoning board or planning board, to be looking at all of the other properties around. When that's not a property that's in front of you, that would become encumbersome on any meeting.
A lot was created, it's obviously a legal lot, it's, I'm sure they're taxed as a full tax rate, I I have that people here can talk to the tax, I'm sure they're taxed full price for the lot. And they've been taxed for twenty years, full price for the lot. It was, they're paying for it, it was approved as a legal lot. It was sold as a legal lot because it was obviously transferred. And we have noticed this now at this point when we're looking to develop the lot, and we're just simply looking to get it cleaned up through the proper zoning viaduct. And I think we have a good proposal and uh I just can't kind of keep going back to the point that it was. Just gone through the filter, that the lot wasn't checked and it was shy by a small amount, but. It's just, things happen, I'm sure you're aware that, you know, things.
And that's the burden of a landowner to pay the taxes and to check these things, it's not, you know, it's it's on your burden. Not on, I I mean, I know why you're here and uh it's the burden of the landowner.
It truly was unfortunately, I I think truly a a lack of. You know, doing a due diligence on on a buyer's part, I mean, it might have been advertised the way it was advertised. But it goes back to the purchaser and and their agent to make sure they're getting what they're getting. And unfortunately, in this case, they weren't getting what they thought they were getting.
They had a legal lot that has been recorded in registry, so like.
And that's that's fabulous.
The actual approval, um it couldn't, it was uh, I'm trying to explain this, is you have created a parcel here, like.
We're not disputing that there's a parcel, there's the, there's the issue of whether or not you can put what you're looking to put on this parcel.
Well, you can put anything, you can't put anything on the parcel, not not my project, you can't even put a house on this parcel. It's, it does not meet the minimum buildable area requirements, you could not put a single family, I mean, that's not permitted by right, but assuming it was, you could not put a house on this parcel. You cannot.
And that was, that was the problem that was created by the seller.
It's not just the size of the the project, it's it's just the actual issue of.
And I, and I understand that, and I I don't.
Okay, well, I'm just, um, I wanna let you know those things, if anyone uh, the owner, like to chime in. They may be present at this meeting to provide additional testimony. There's also the developer, Joe Mandola, I'd open it up to him if he'd like to discuss this with the board, this project.
Well, like I, this is Paul, I I guess we probably should at March since we seem to be collectively stuck on. On who who did, who did what and when and whose responsibility is and and whose fault it is and un- unfortunately, what where I'm stuck is. What I've heard you say is you didn't wanna speculate, you know, about what a nineteen ninety-six planning board did. Except unfortunately you are speculating, you're saying that it was inadvertent. And I can sit here and make a similar argument, you know, similar speculative argument that says it was purposeful. That somebody made a deal with a planning board and said move this lot line, I know we're making an. A lot on lot one A on one twenty-five, I know we're doing that, but it's more important for us to develop lot two A. That would appear to be something that the the Conterinos did. And then the Albacato Limited Partnership bought it, which is the deed that everybody's referencing in nineteen ninety-six. Albacato bought both of the lots, they bought lot one A and they bought lot two A. And then they needed it, then they wanted to do something with the lot, so they built the back lot and got stuck with, you know, whatever the deal was. Prior to their purchase, the lot line move. I would contend, I don't know anything about what happened in nineteen ninety-six, so I don't possess any authority, I just offer it as, in a devil's advocate view. Somebody did this on purpose, and so I'm not sure why, fast forward thirty years, we should. And so I'm not sure why, fast forward thirty years, we should undo what somebody did on purpose.
Uh, this is Joe Mandola speaking, can you folks hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, uh, yeah, and it's a matter of timing too because, uh, we, I guess the law, uh, putting these regulations in, in effect, my understanding came in in ninety six. If this, this lot was created in the eighties and if it happened in the eighties, it wouldn't be the case. But, um, all we're, we're saying is, I don't want to place blame on anybody. What I'd like to see is, is this to go forward, uh, because we're going to pay significant six-figure taxes to the town, which will help schools, help community services, so on and so forth. And so the, the choice is, uh, to work with us and make this adjustment, don't care who, who's, who did it, whose fault it was. But I think the town deserves to have the maximum amount of value granted to this lot so the townspeople can have this on the tax goals that can support community services that's so important to them.
Is, is self-storage the maximum amount of value the town can get out of that lot?
Okay, the question, I mean, it's an approved use and it's a good use, use, it's different factors that go into that calculation, so.
The town deserves to get the maximum, uh, benefit of use from that lot. So if we're, were to grant a variance, we would want to get the maximum, uh, value, um, to the town, uh, for issuance of a variance, I guess. So I'm just questioning if self-storage is, is the maximum, uh, use.
It becomes a win-win for everybody because, uh, you know, we're going to pay again six figures of taxes to the town, which is important. And it'll be a, a, a good use of the land, uh, for all, all the activity that's going down there. So, you know, I, I, I guess it seems like a, a technicality or whatever, but I, I just, it's gotta be a, a win for the town. Uh, and ob- obviously it's important to us because we've invested diligence effort here. But, uh, to, to not have tha- that significant income accrued to the benefit of the taxpayers, uh, just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, uh, this is, this is Brian Fortress, I don't know if you can hear me, I'm with GFI Partners or another member of the developer. I, and to answer that question, I, I was thinking about that, I don't, um, looking at what's approved here and, and with the, the shape and configuration, there's a lot, actually, I think that, I do think that, um, I can't think of a use that we would put here that would have, uh, a, a much higher value. I don't know, Joe, if you agree, Joe, you work in this market, but I don't, uh, look at what's, what could fit and what's approved here. I think this is, yeah, I think this is a pretty, we're creating a pretty high value use here, that's, that's going to have a high property value. So I, I think that we're trying to do our best to create the most valuable piece of property we can. I, I can't, off the top of my head, I can't think of something here that would be more valuable, frankly.
Yeah, this comes just a, a real win for the town because, uh, there'll be no children going to school. Uh, the traffic pattern for self-storage is, you know, maybe five cars a day. Uh, and, and this building is, because it's climate control multi-story, uh, we're looking at a, uh, you know, ten-plus million dollar property, uh, that the, the town really should enjoy, uh, the taxes for that. So no school-
Taxes are going to be over a hundred thousand dollars, right, a year?
Yeah, no schools, no traffic.
No sewer, you know, we're not gonna, yeah, we don't, we don't really need any services or anything, yeah. So, yeah, I think to answer your question, I, I think this, I couldn't say definitively, but this probably is among, if not the highest useful property, uh, uh, without having done a full analysis of, yeah. Multi-family, so multi-family is not allowed, right, yeah? Is that right, Jason?
I'm not in front of the ordinance, but my-
I think that's right, yeah.
That's correct.
You wouldn't get, you wouldn't get much here anyways, um, so, yeah, I, 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 I feel comfortable saying this is probably, you know, if not the, it's among the highest, most valuable uses that would generate the most taxes. So, yeah, I, 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 I don't know, I know it's not a definitive answer to your question, but that's my, um, informal opinion. Yeah.
So let me, let me ask a question, just make sure I understand. Assuming that, that the building goes up, all the setback requirements are met, there's no impinging on the wetlands. Is that active statement?
Oh, is that a question, it was up the question, yeah. Yeah, thank you, um, I believe that's, that's correct, Jason, right?
Yeah, there's no wetland impacts to the jerk, the actual wetland resource area. Uh, there would be some, uh, impacts to the hundred-foot buffer area, just some impacts, just to related to some parking facilities, but no-
Right, some of the, some of the parks, some of the parking areas are within the hundred foot, yeah, right?
But it's been minimized and that's partly why, you know, this, uh, property and this building works well because it can be, uh, there's a lot of grade change across the property, it's sloping. So this allows us to do, uh, like basically a walkout style development that, that kind of fits in with the geography. It slopes, uh, down towards the wetlands, there's a significant, uh, I wouldn't say significant, there's some grade change, and so-
It's pretty steep, yeah.
Yeah, so we're proposing like, um, a different, uh, an at-grade elevation. On one side of the building, we'll have a three-story, and then on the upper side, there'll be a, uh, two-story so that we can build the foundation into the terrain and, uh, not disturb any significant portion of the protected zones.
Yeah, that's a really good point, actually, you know, I think, I don't know what other, if you're building office or retail or multi-family, you couldn't, I mean, you, you can, we can just-
It's all slab on grade, yeah.
Yeah, minimum disturbance here to the, to the natural landscape, uh, where you couldn't, you, it, it's okay with self-storage to have some areas that, like those two floors that don't have any windows, you, you really couldn't do that with any other, um, property type. So I think that this, that's another good point you make, Jason, that this-
To maximize our-
Fits into the natural landscape, yeah, without disturbs, you know, you want, we're not, otherwise, you, you're not going to have these giant retaining, ugly retaining walls and things.
Yeah.
We could tuck it right into the hill, that's a really, that's a really good point, yeah.
Do, do you, do you have any elevations of the building, just so we can see what it looks like?
Yes, I do, if you, I can present if you'd like. Uh, I can present the elevations. I'm, I'm gonna push the button, present now. Hopefully it'll let me share. Just give me a second here to pull, to call them up. Can you see that? The elevation?
I, I can't.
I don't see anything.
Okay, one second.
Oh, now I see something, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Do you see them? So that's just an elevation view, this green, I think, is just the ground, that's kind of a weird green, but that's just the ground behind it where the office park is. But this would be the elevation view from the west, which is, uh, the low side, which is towards north and over towards the airport. So as you're coming from the airport, this is the view. Uh, that's a side view that shows the grade change that, that, uh, they, they he just referred to how we're using the land to minimize disturbance. There's some more planned views, here's another good view of how we're building the foundation into the ground. So if we had like a single, if we were trying to do like a residential development, you may end up with like one plane of land or you end up with a huge wall here and then a cut over here. So this, this to do like a walkout style, uh, minimizing disturbance. Here's a north, here's some renderings. Active views from the, this is from the east looking, from the west looking east, actually looking up the debt, it's looking-
Right, yeah.
Yeah, Beechwood, so Osgood's here, we're looking up Beechwood, here's the office complex, here's your tower. This area will be gated, it'll be a secured area, and then we have parking for the tenants in this area as well. Here's your elevation view, also looking up Beechwood, here's the lower driveway. Um, here's our tenant, our new tenant and employee parking area. This is parking for the tenants themselves, obviously in front of, uh, in front of the overhead doors. And then here's the grade change that we alluded to, so we're eating up that through, uh, the use of an exposed foundation. And I think that's all I have, I have elevations, uh, I have another, I think that's all I have on the end for elevation views, but we'll develop those as we proceed. But it's basically a massing diagram that we expect to implement. It'll be an attractive-looking building. Steel construction, uh, it's not going to be like, uh, one of those like single-story self-storage units that, that you see that are kind of just obsolete, outdated-looking or not attractive. This will look almost has a office-style aesthetic, so that'll blend into the neighborhood as well, I think, the architecture. Look good.
Thank you.
So I've actually been reviewing the minutes from the nineteen ninety six planning board. Thank you for internet. There was no issue raised at any point in time regarding what was happening with the other property. So it wasn't even something that was brought up by a planning board member, which wouldn't be their responsibility, but also not something that was put in the spotlight by the applicant at the time. Okay, so issues came up about the wetlands and drainage, trees, lighting. But obviously, an applicant isn't going to raise a red flag to creating a lot that is going to now be smaller when they're trying to benefit the other lot.
I think that kind of goes to my point is it was just overlooked.
I think it goes to your point that the planning board is not responsible to be looking at pieces of property that are outside of the application.
Yeah, well, it was not outside, it was involved because it was the second, you know, it was the other piece of the plan, but it was a direct-
And the advantage that the applicant had at that time was that I believe they owned both pieces of property. So if anything, the applicant is disadvantage-
Yep.
The applicant is disadvantaging the applicant.
So I guess I said, your point is completely valid and it makes all this, I don't, I, 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 this is Brian again, uh, from GFI Partners. So I know, um, Joe and I are a little bit kind of outsiders in this conversation, but, um, you know, we're under agreement to acquire the property. I, I don't, I don't know what happened, but, um, I, I, I don't, I don't, I just, you know, we are, we're hoping to buy it and, um, this is only we can buy it, we'd like to build this and, um, we're hoping that this is something the town is interested in having and we would like to make this happen. And I, I don't know what happened, I wasn't around in the nineties, I don't know, you know, what you're saying makes total sense and, uh, um, but I'm hoping that, you know, we've put time and effort into, into putting something forward we think we hope the town likes and, um, but we would need some relief to make it happen. So, so thank you for whatever you can, you can consider, make it happen, we'd really appreciate it.
A second there, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I just want to explain from our aspect of how we presume the situation to be. So it's clear to the full board and the public. We appreciate working with the town and, uh, will obviously continue to do so with the utmost respect and, uh, participation.
Thank you, anything else from the board?
Yes, Paul?
I was hoping you'd chime in, Mr. Kusia, come on in.
Well, I've been absorbing all, all of the above here. Uh, I just wonder, my TV on the channel eight, uh, channel nine, whatever the town thing is, I couldn't catch how he presented these, these elevation shots. So I am clueless as to what this building is going to look like, right? And I went on TV and it wasn't on TV and my telephone, uh, you, you can only talk on the telephone. If this is going to move forward and they would want me to vote on this, I would like to see some elevation shots provided to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Kusia, I think that's an appropriate ask.
You want me to load them again?
Well, where, where do I see them, I mean, I tried channel eight and it says try again, why couldn't you?
So to, to clarify a little bit here, uh, Mr. Kusia is calling in on a phone, so he is not in the Google Meet interface. That Google Meet interface is also not being broadcast.
Okay.
Broadcast is audio only. And so, um, I think what he's asking for is, is that if this, he does not feel comfortable voting on this until he has a paper copy that has been submitted for presumably a future meeting.
Okay, we can do that, but I think it's irrelevant to the application because it's, this application is basically saying you can't build anything on the property. So the elevations are part of our testimony as to why this is a good project, but as to legally how, um, it should be, you know, well, the documentation, I think I, I can get that to him offline, but, um, whether or not this is a pretty building or not is not the question.
Unfortunately, I'm going to have to take exception to a couple, a couple of things, that's the second of two. Uh, earlier in the conversation, somebody was saying, you know, it's just a technicality. Well, unfortunately, here at the North Zoning Board of Appeals, of our lives, every, every month to these meetings in order to pour over technicalities. So a technicality being dismissed by someone on the applicant's team is not, that really, uh, you know, I don't look too favorably on something like that. The second thing that I'll take exception to is that for better applicant requests relief from the zoning code, everything is on the table. So a pretty building, if that's important to one of the zoning board members who may be voting on the application, whether you legally think it's relevant or not, it's on the table.
No problem, we'll provide the zoning board with that plan.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome, no problem.
Anything else from the board tonight?
No, I would, I like to-
Kind of sounds to me like we need a continuance.
No question about it.
But I, I, I disagree, but, but- Press forward with what we have tonight. I'm not suggesting vote, but if we have any further questions, then let's, let's, uh, let's talk them out tonight. We can certainly have more on March, but if there's more to talk about tonight, then let's, so is anything else from the board?
Yeah, I have a question, the, um-
The minutes from, um, the internet, the world wide web, but I'd like to see those in a packet and I'd like to see those distributed to the board as well. I mean, I'd like to see a little bit of the history of why it was split, what happened, um, a little more background than, uh, was just in the sweep, so.
So I know the minutes can be gotten online, it took me a little bit of finagling around the website.
Alan, would you forward them to Jen so she doesn't have to dig them up and then Jen will circulate?
Uh, yes, the only thing I might have any issue finding is the actual application itself, but I can at least get Jen in the right direction.
Great, thank you very much.
And if there's a plan with that, um, I'd, I'd, as-built plan, I'd like that as well, too, great.
Do I have a question about?
Built what, Ellen, as-built lot two A?
Yes, please. Because wasn't that the application? So in order to build on two A, the office, they had to change the lot line. So lot two A had, has a office pop on it, you said five feet from the lot line, uh, parking, I, I'm not quite sure what you had, what you were saying about two A.
All right, well-
I can look through the two A, put in their application, my assumption is, because all I see is a parking lot on the extension of the line.
What's the question?
I, I just wanna-
An as though.
I just want to know why the lot lines had to be changed, and I think my answer might be in an as-built plan because you changed it for X, Y, and Z reasons. I want to know the reasoning.
Who's handling that question for my, this is Jason.
You, it's, it's the burden's on you.
I think he's talking amongst us, right, yeah?
Well, okay, I'll talk offline on that, I didn't know who, if you were directing this to someone else other than the applicant. Okay, thank you.
So um, yeah, I, I, I see that you have a septic system versus a pu- the public sewer and I I believe the town at a town meeting, we had uh I think there were some provisions being made. I, I forget the details about extending sewer out into that area. The, do you know, have you looked into um, when that might be available or or if that is a practical case? I'm not even certain that's the case. It's a fuzzy memory I have here of what, what we're doing with the sewer out there.
The answer to the question is yes. We've talked to Jim Stanford and it sounded like it was uh, something that would be there in the design process, they, the DPW of North Andover is in the process of designing would potentially come online within one to three or four years. Um, so we uh, thinking about providing like a, during the construction, providing a gravity stub so that we could tie into this future system. However, we, as Brian mentioned, is or Joe, we have small sewer flows. So the site has been designed to accommodate a septic system and a replacement field uh, within the buildable areas. So we've thought both things through. Is the immediate need before the town installs the sewer? And then potentially upgrading if it, you know, is a benefit in the future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking up in the town, up and down the table, anything else from the board?
No, I'd just like to see what this, this property is going to look like.
Fair request. If there's nothing else, then shall we, well, maybe I'll, I'll punt it back to the applicant. Uh, anything further from the applicant before we move to continue?
Um, no, thank you for considering it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Nothing else from the board, then? Shall there be a motion to continue to March ninth?
I make a motion to continue it to March ninth.
Thank you, Alan. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Alexandria?
That was me.
All right, thank you. We'll go up the roll. Alex. Motion to continue made and seconded. Now we're going up the roll. Alexandria.
Sorry, Alex, yeah.
You, Ellen McIntyre.
Yes.
Alan Kusia?
Yes.
Ron Fagan?
Yes.
I'm a yes. We are continued to March ninth. If there's a time waiver, please connect with the zoning administrator, Jennifer Battersby.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you, folks. Thank you.
Good night. Next item on the agenda is fifty-five fifty-seven Ferber Avenue. Do we have anybody from the applicant on the line?
Yes, we do. Michael Larkin here.
Thank you very much. Um, clerk, would you mind opening the uh, in the matter?
Yeah, it'd be my pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks.
Note, notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand twenty-one at seven thirty PM. To all parties interested in the petition of Megan Larkin for property at fifty-five dash fifty-seven Ferber Ave, map zero zero eight one comma parcel fifty-four North Andover, Mass. O one eight four five in the R four zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five, four point three A, Residence Four District. In addition to the variance previously granted allowing two buildings on one lot, the applicant requests to modify the existing DBA decision to allow the single-family home at fifty-seven Ferber Ave to remain on the property. In doing so, the applicant will convert the three-family home at fifty-five Ferber Ave to a two-family dwelling. Application and supporting materials are available for review by appointment only at the office of the zoning department located at one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of eight AM to four PM. Tuesday, from the hours of eight AM to five thirty PM, and Friday, from the hours of eight AM to eleven thirty AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Clark, Jr., Esquire Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And now, Mr. Larkin, for what the hearing is open, would you kindly introduce yourself for the record?
Uh, my name is Michael Larkin. I'm the brother of uh, Brendan Larkin and uh, his wife and Megan Larkin is here at the meeting here today. Appreciate you guys working late here tonight. And what happened here is the, the applicants came back in um in December, kind of granted the variance for the proposed project and came back and did a minor modification in, in March. And after that, they got the decision approved. They got the building permit from the, the town. It started construction on the single-family dwelling in, in June. Uh, construction moved along fine. They've got the house built and uh all, all sign-offs are all completed except for the final sign-off, which would be giving the specific occupancy for the unit. Unfortunately, in essence, the perfect storm kind of happened to the applicant here. So as part of the decision, uh, one of the things was to demolish the existing single-family home there. So what we left was the new single-family home plus the three-family dwelling unit. So said, talk about this perfect storm, so we have COVID happening and the applicant is trying to do what they can do here. They give the tenants a sixty-day notice to quit back in August two thousand twenty, knowing of, you know, with four or five months that they're going to be ready to um, start demolishing the unit. Of course, you know, with COVID, they've now have a moratorium. Back then, it was until the end of October, which got extended till December, which now is extended past March. They've tried, you know, uh, applicants move to, uh, I mean, helping the tenant move to different locations. After our multiple efforts, the tenant trying to relocate, they're unable to have the tenant move. And with the, what's happening right now with the, of course, COVID is they can't evict the tenants. So they've got kind of this situation and they're kind of in a, in a difficult situation right now. And this is where this hardship comes in. They got their construction loan and that, of course, only lasts, you know, a fixed time where it would convert to um at a permanent loan with a regular lender, but to convert to a permanent loan with a regular lender, that lender will acquire a final sort of occupancy to give, construct, give their permanent residential loan. So they've kind of got in this situation, what to do. So what they're kind of proposing here tonight is kind of a modification of the format, but also looking for the board's guidance of, you know, what we, we can do here. Uh, so ultimately that they can move into their house. I mean, that's ultimately the main goal here, is to move into their new house. They're a young couple. They have a, a two-year-old daughter. What's unfortunate happens, you know, they thinking this was going to happen and, you know, trying to move in to the new house around this time of year. They moved everything out of their, of their last uh, place they were living at. Unfortunately, with this delay now, um, the wife is now living with parents, with the daughter and the brothers. They're living with family members. So we've got this chaotic situation. Again, we're talking about this kind of perfect storm where no one, no, this is not going well for anyone. It's becoming a very stressful situation. You have financing issues coming due. They can't refinance, they put refinance, they have to get their the regular financial mortgage. So we've got a lot going on right now. So again, what we're proposing today is to see if they can keep that single, second, single family and then eliminate one of the units in the three-family. That's what they're, that's what we're looking at right now. So I think that's on the table. Again, it's just, it's a difficult situation, a situation they didn't want to be here under the board for the board's guidance and, you know, the relief requested to see if we can move forward and kind of move into their house and, you know, get on with our lives.
I just want to jump in real quick. We don't have a letter of authorization. If that makes a difference to anybody.
Uh, Miss, uh, Megan Larkin's with, here on the, the Google Meet as well, if she wants to make a comment about that.
And I guess it comes down to our chairman, someone else presenting other than uh, the applicant without a letter of authorization.
What is the letter of authorization? Like, what are you looking?
It allows for somebody else to speak on your behalf at a meeting.
I think, I think Larkin can give authorization now if that, if that's sufficient for the chair.
Yeah, we'll do that now.
It's sufficient to hear verbally, and if you rehabilitate the record by submitting a written letter of authorization after the meeting, then that'll be.
We can do that, Chair. That, that makes sense.
Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Jacobs. That's something that I certainly missed.
It happened. Do I have other board members?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Larkin was unavailable. He had, he had a prior agreement and so he, he was unavailable, so I stepped in to help him and uh, Megan here to get this uh, present, presentation before the board.
So let, I, I, I'll, I'll open with a, a question because I, I get confused by things, as is evidenced by my inability to notice whether or not there, whether or not there was a letter of authorization. But give, give me the bottom line here. I'm looking at a plan and I'm looking at the decision that um, you know, on the variance, you know, a number of months ago. And the decision was to allow two structures, two residential structures on the lot. And now it looks like you want to increase that from two residential structures to three residential structures. And, and, and do I have that right?
Uh, uh, that, uh, that's the request right now. That's correct.
And this is due to COVID. I just want to throw that in there.
That's correct, yeah. So we, we can, because we can't evict the tenant, we, we've, we've asked, you know, we've given them notice. We've started the eviction process, but there's no way to physically move them out, so there's no way to demolish the building. So ultimately, the, the bottom line with the, what the applicant wants is to into their house. You know, this is one avenue to do it. We're all, also open to alternative avenues, but at, at the, at the end of the day, they want to be traded, they just move into their house and you know, settle down. Again, they've got a very, you know, difficult situation where the wife is living with her parents, with their, their daughter, the husband is living with family as well. So we just got a, you know, a terrible situation right here.
So I, I, again, I want to, I want to drill down. I appreciate the clarification that this is due to COVID. COVID is going to end one day. The application, as I'm seeing it, suggests that you want to permanently have three residential structures on this single lot. Do I have that right?
That's the, that's correct. That's the request right here right now.
All right. I don't need any further discussion, but the board may have more questions.
So is that the garage, that would be four, or are they?
No, we'll take the garage down.
But it's on the lot, on the lot that you gave us, the lot then that you gave us.
Yes.
And it doesn't seem to be raised. So in my eyes, it looks like four.
I have some questions. In the existing dwelling, the three-family home, how were the apartments made up? Are they two on the first floor, one on the second, one on the first, two on the second? How were they made up?
There's two on the first floor, like the garden style up and down, the first, first floor, second floor. There's a smaller apartment in the first floor in the back.
Mm-hmm. So there were two on the first floor and then what, one on the, one on the second?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what assurances does the town have? Let's say we were to allow this. What assurances does the town have to say that as soon as you get this, six months down the road, a year down the road, that this doesn't come back to be a three-family house again?
Well, um, it could probably be put in the deed. Does that make sense?
Could, a restriction, or also we could restrict it, or restrict there by modifying the, by the dwelling as well. We could do it that way.
How, how, how would you restrict it by modifying the dwelling?
I think, Megan, you've got a better idea how the layout is set up. Could we do that?
Um, yeah, so the, there's two units on the first floor. The one in the back is a much smaller unit. It's up and down, so we could take um, that one out. If that makes more sense. And then the, the other two would be kept, which is more garden style up and down.
And I think what we could do as well as, you know, with rentals and applications were renewed, so we could also um that do a, you know, an affidavit or else submit, submit to the board of health or whoever, whatever department show that there's only two rental units in, in the building at any one time. So that, that could be an ongoing condition that could, we could provide to the town.
There's no way to actually enforce that.
Mm-hmm.
That we, that's the same problem we have with on-pre.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Let me ask you a question. I thought, didn't I read somewhere in the paperwork that you gave the people a sixty-day notice to quit?
That's correct. They have a sixty-day notice to, uh, the lease, it's every two months. So we've got a sixty-day notice requirement for those people.
Okay, and I don't know why you gave them a sixty, why thirty wouldn't have done. And have you served them with a complaint yet to, to vacate?
They, they started the process. Yes, that's correct.
So you've served them a, a notice to vaca-, uh, you've served them the summons and complaint?
They've got, I believe that they give, serve them the notice to quit.
No, no, the, one thing is the notice to quit, then there's something called the summons.
Yeah, they haven't served them the complaint yet. That's correct.
Uh, they, they haven't served the complaint?
That's correct.
Uh, so, okay. And you haven't heard from the court on, on a hearing date?
No.
Okay, sure. You are aware, and we are all up in ear, that the moratorium ends, this is a question mark, at the end of March. It could be extended or, or it could be a, a hard date. Okay, you are aware of that, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, ultimately, you know, in, in the alternative is to um, you know, as I said, the, the primary goal for the, the applicant here is to be able to move into their house and, and, and I, and I think they had some discussions with the town. If we were to do a demo delay on that and then give them the CO, I think that would also suffice to give, you know, to give these people what they wanted. So that way, you know, eliminate the unit, but also, you know, get them to their house, get them to do their financing, get them to clean up, all that stuff. And then, you know, we have a demo delay on the single for a period of time. I think uh, one of the board members, you know, we talked about this, you know, March date, so we could extend it just a bit beyond that date. And then ultimately, they get what they want is to get their house. And uh, and that would follow in compliance with um, the decision of them being granted by this for two days. If that's something that works for the board, I think that's ultimately what they could, would, ultimately what they want to do is follow to get the decision that they, you know, that they're already being granted. We may have to do a sort of demo delay.
That concerns me in the sense that we then go back to the issue that somebody has to follow up to make sure that it's actually demoed at some point and there's uproar from the borders left and right.
But that's what the building is back there is for.
And there also could be um, red paint in that single-family house. Um, we found out they had a baby, our tenants had a baby, we didn't know about. Um, and it's a possibility that house has and we'd have to let it, twenty-five thousand dollars. So just, just kind of stuck in every trade.
So I need to interject, feedback, reverberate, whatever it is, would any point, he can kindly mute themselves. Thank you.
And I, I sympathize with you on a lead issue and, and an infant. Um, but I don't I don't see that how that follows through to making a permanent decision based off of a temporary situation.
Well, I think we have the building, the building inspector, who is the zoning enforcement officer, who, who, he said um, if the chair said, you know, the board decided we'll give you a six-month demo delay, get your CO. So in six months' time, you would, yeah, we'd reach out to the board, we'd reach out to the building inspector, and he would determine that it's, it, we're compliant to that point and and then report back to the board.
Yeah, but my question with that is, how do we know in six months that someone's still not living there and, and you can't get them out?
Or a new tenant.
Uh, right, that's what I mean. Uh, uh, right, a new tenant. I mean, what, what guarantee do we, that we have that in six months, that place is going to be empty?
That's what they're trying to do. We'll, you'll see, we'll submit the paperwork to show the complaint, to show all our paperwork. They're not trying to be deceitful and try to keep these people here. They want to, they've got a house that they can't move into, so that, the thing that they would try to keep a tenant not move into their house, that, that would, that would be a very long stretch. Ultimately, they want to move out. That's what the whole purpose is. If this wasn't the case, they couldn't, if they could move the tenant out, we wouldn't be talking to you right now. We'd have moved them out. That's the fact.
Yeah, 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 but if we let them move in, okay, if we let them move in, the incentive to get the tenant out is gone.
It's not gone at all.
Oh, yeah? The tenant's there, there, there? What changes here?
Especially rent.
Yeah.
Okay, the alternative is that they go bankrupt in the meantime because they can't refinance their house. So that's, that's a huge incentive to get the tenant out.
Aren't they protected via the Aren't they protected via the COVID laws that they can't be foreclosed on?
Yes.
Okay, as you can't get this person out, as that law applies to a moratorium on the 30th of March, there's the same moratorium on foreclosures on, on, on homes.
That's what I'm trying to do is see what we can do to get these people in. And I'm trying to work out what we can do here, you know. If, if, if moratorium goes on another sixty, ninety days, are they, are they just going to live with their parents for the next sixty, ninety days and have this perpetual, you know, situation? You can see that they're kind of, the situation they're in here.
When was construction completed?
It's complete now. They're just waiting for a final.
No, when was it completed?
About a month, about a month ago.
And when did you start the eviction process?
In August.
I'm assuming the tenant fully knew that you were going to be demoing the property.
Correct. That's correct.
You know, Alex, let me throw something else at you. And it's a funny situation. Even assuming that the moratorium is lifted in March, at the end of March, there's going to be a number of cases, there's going to be floodgates of cases going into court, uh, to trying to resolve the differences, be it evictions, the cases like this or whatever. So even if the moratorium was to end at the end of March, it could be two, three, four months before he gets a court date.
I, I completely understand that and I, I sympathize with the situation, but they're not, they didn't come to the board asking for a temporary solution to a temporary problem. They came to the board requesting a permanent solution to a temporary problem. So I think there's a huge difference on what the circumstances are to what they're asking for.
Well, well, my problem is this, Alex, okay? And I think Paul said it best at the beginning. From an original application that was going to end up with the building on the far left, uh, being a three-family unit, and the building being on the far right, with a lot of empty space in the middle, that was the best application to blend in with the neighborhood per se. But now, there's going to be three buildings, forget the garage if they knocked that down or not, but there's going to be a three-family, a single and a single. There's three buildings instead of the two that was originally proposed.
And I think that's too much. And I think we're hearing from the butters left and right that it's too much.
I can't argue with that.
And all of these butters, almost all of these butters were in support originally of the project. And they have now turned to switch because this is what they originally got, which was generous and it fit and it, it went. And now it's asking for too much.
The applicant wants to move this building. It just can't right now.
But you're not, the application didn't come in with trying to find some time, some kind of a temporary solution. The application came in asking for a permanent solution. And I get concerned between, you know, having to do follow-up. I mean, it's already hard enough to do follow-up on, on numerous different building aspects and zoning regulations that we set. Now it's having to find on the court process where you're going with it, when you're getting them out, when you're demoing. I don't think six months on demo is necessarily going to get us anywhere.
But in the meantime, we have people that can't move, live in our house, that are living separate, you know, separate lives. You know, if they can move in their house, they, they will take the steps to do that. That's the whole purpose of this, take the steps. You know, the board's got to be, have some sort of leniency that they don't understand that people can't, they can't demo the house. So we, we got the decision based on this and now we can't do this. If there was these no laws.
How many rental properties, how many rental properties are on the property?
Two.
Three?
One others.
Two, the, the three-family and a single.
Correct.
No, no, there's a three-family and a single.
Correct.
So how many rental properties are there?
Four.
Four units.
Four rental properties. How many of them are rented?
Four.
All four of them are rented.
You're talking four apartments or four rental properties?
There's three in the three.
Four apartments.
And there's one in the single family.
Four rental units.
Four rental units.
Okay, on the application, the current use, it says two single-family units and one three, uh, and one three-family. So that's five.
Well, that's what they're looking for.
Right, we're not.
It says current, that's what it says, current use. And what they're looking for, two single-family units and one two-family unit. So going from three to two. So that appears that there's five there now and that the application says that would be going to four.
But one of those, but one of those existing ones. Because the fifth one doesn't have a certificate of occupancy.
That's correct.
Okay, so there's still four. The fifth one isn't a legal place.
That's correct.
Okay.
There, there are, whatever the numbers are, rental units or single homes or whatever, there are residential structures on one lot. The question that this board offered was, hey, Mr. Applicant, you can have two. You're going to demolish one of. There are, you, there are two on, there are two, there's a three-family on the lots now. Want to build a new thing? I get it, that's great. You can build a new building, but you got to demolish the old.
That's what they want to do.
Want to demolish anything anymore.
Well, we're stuck right now.
Well, and I think, I think the application, uh, like I say, you're looking for a permanent solution to a temporary problem. And I, you're saying that you're looking for something temporary, but that's not at all what the application is asking for.
Well, what would you recommend, or have any ideas what, what the applicants could do here that could, you know, move forward?
Open the courts.
That, open the courts.
Open the courts.
I, I, that's, I'm not running the country.
I don't, I don't see where that's for me to, to throw out. I mean, I, that's what the applicant comes to us with.
Solution, I think we're here, we think, we have to give them their CO and then they, you know, you know, have a, a period of time, a demo delay, which is not unreasonable to ask for a demo delay on the, on the other house.
So the concern is that you have some delay in the demo, but then there's nothing to enforce that being done. It doesn't get completed. So I guess my question was, is,
The town is enforcing.
Do, do, do we as, as a town have the ability to require you posting some sort of bond, uh, with a certificate of occupancy, uh, that doesn't get released until, uh, the other house is demolished?
Can they do that? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know. I have no idea. So I'm just wondering if there's some sort of security the town can have to, uh, to hold as enforcement over that.
I mean, the, the, the building inspector does have the authority if, 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 if there's a, if there's a condition that has to be demolished and that a person doesn't demolish, demolish the unit. The, the building inspector does have the authority to go ahead and demolish the unit. It happens a lot of times in, in different towns. You know, especially you see like foreclosures and that kind of thing. They do have the authorities.
Well, the building, but the single-family house with a tenant in it isn't unsafe.
No, no.
You're talking, when, when you're saying have the right to, to demo or kick out, and a building inspector could correct me, but I believe that's if you're facing an issue where it's unsafe or unhabitable, which I'm not hearing any of those with this.
But it's a condition, a condition on the, on the decision to, to demolish. I think the, the building inspector could take that, move forward in that penalty why not?
Well, this is the building inspector. This is Paul Hutchins. That's the situation we're in right now. You just said what we're in right now. I can't enforce it right now. The building is still there. It was supposed to be knocked down before I can issue a CO. That was the agreement. Um, the people are still in it. Um, the house has been built. It has not been final inspected and, and, um, we're in the same situation you're, you're just talking about.
Yeah, well, this is a different.
Where, where was the applicant, where was the applicant living when they put in their original application?
Um, living with, um, in Methuen, but then we were.
Okay, so you weren't at any point in time living in any of the, the properties here. So you were always living in Methuen?
Correct.
So how does that change the circumstances now?
They don't.
And I say that, you make it, you made it, your brother, brother-in-law made it sound as if you've all been displaced, which almost gave me the impression that you were living in one of the rentals and then rented out the rental in your assumption that you were moving into the new property.
No, our tenants in the single-family house were supposed to move out in December. So we packed up our house, same thing with us, moving out of our house in Methuen in December. And then their house, their apartment fell through. So since December, I'm living on my parents' couch with clothes in the trash.
So they were supposed to, they were supposed to move December of 2020.
Correct.
So they were going to move December of 2020, well into the pandemic and that changed.
Yes.
I guess it's, to me, that means the tenant was willing to leave and now, and it made it sound prior as if they weren't willing to leave.
No, they're unable to leave at this point.
Right, they're willing to leave.
Why are they unable to leave, why are they unable to leave a month or so after they were originally going to leave?
Probably the same thing. Maybe the, the renter found out that they had a baby and maybe they've let paint. I'm not really sure why.
Oh, uh, see now, this is, originally it sounded as if your tenant would not leave.
Oh, no.
And your tenant, your tenant is very willing to leave.
To leave.
They've been never saying they're going to stay. They never said, we're not moving. They never said anything like that.
Okay, well, then they need to find their place. I mean, they were willing to, they were willing to, they were willing to move a month ago. And I understand their other place fell through. Now it's for them to, to find a new place. I don't understand why the circumstances of them willing to leave has changed.
They're not, they're always willing to leave. They just can't find another place. She lost her job during COVID. Um, his hours got diminished. So I think maybe that could be a problem, why no one's like trusting them maybe to get a, um, the rent. They've always paid rent on time. Um, we have no problem with them.
Oh, I mean, uh,
I mean, this really.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, their hardship is feeding your hardship and then you're looking to us to correct everybody's hardship.
Yeah, but COVID caused all of this. This is on our control, everyone's control here.
But you say COVID causes all, caused all of this. And I understand to an extent COVID might have, but they were, they were, listen, they were willing and able to move a month ago, which means they must have had a first month's security deposit last month and been ready to go. So we're not talking a financial situation where they're not financially, because they must have had it if they were telling you they were leaving in December, if they're paying their rent. Which in my, for me, is very different than they're squatting and saying, no, forget you. I get that you want me out. I'm not leaving. Unfortunately, their hardship creates your hardship and you want a solution here.
I know that they're always looking for a place. They got a realtor to help them recently to help them find a place. They're, they're willing to leave. Um, I, I don't know how else to answer for them, but they're, they're very.
How long have the other, the other rental has been rented? Have they been rented throughout all of the last year?
Two years.
I mean, like I say, it's unfortunate.
But it creates a chaos. I mean, this is a real hardship if, if they, if they can't do something here and move into, into the dwelling, they can't refinance it to get, you know, permanent lending, which will cause complete financial chaos for these people. I mean, to say, what's the big deal? I mean, there's going to be a massive repercussion.
And I'm not at all, no, I'm not at all saying what, there's no big deal. I'm, I have not at once said that. I'm saying your tenant's hardship and your tenant's lack of moving, for whatever reason, is creating the hardship on you and you're coming to us for the, for the solution.
Is there any?
I mean, you could have had this exact same problem without COVID because again, they were willing and able to move a month ago.
Without COVID, we would have evicted them and they'd be gone. It would be a non-issue.
I can tell you right now, if you think an eviction can take two, three, four months, they could have been stuck there for a year regardless of COVID.
No.
Especially with the new baby. The court is, the court is unpredictable.
That's why we started this process a while ago. But, but I think the relief I'm looking for now is if they could get a, a temporary delay.
The relief you request, no, the relief you're requesting is a permanent relief. In your application, it is a permanent relief. So it's not something that I would say and agree with you is a reasonable request.
Request a demo delay is not reasonable?
I don't control demo. I don't even think the board thinks about that.
Delay and then got the CO issued. I think that's reasonable.
I think your biggest problem is getting your tenants out.
Pardon?
The biggest problem is getting your tenants out.
But it's a reasonable solution to this complicated situation here is that they get a, 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 a temporary demo delay, which is not asking for too much. And then they, they have to move into their house. So it solves hu, massive problems. They have to move into their house, they have to refinance the property, and they can take the steps to move, to evict this person. That solves a lot of problems.
Well, you said, you, you said you've, that the steps have already been taken. So are you starting the process or are you in the middle of the process?
But the, the alternative is to not do anything, cause them financial, serious financial hardship. That's the alternative. I mean, this is what this request is for, financial hardship.
Why did you ask for the permanent right to keep three residential buildings on one lot? Why did you ask to keep three residential buildings on one lot forever?
We were looking for any solution. And I think ultimately the board, well, my understanding, what I'm hearing from the board is that is not a non-starter. So that, now we are looking to, our only request here, a, a temporary, a demo delay plus the CO and, and then that's what we're looking to do. So we, we have to talk to the board, understand what they're, where they are. We've seen the concerns. That's a non-starter. So now what we're looking for is this, you know, a demo delay and then to be able to move into the house. I think that's something that can be reasonably granted by this board. I mean, it's, it's, it keeps, it keeps the special permit, I mean, it keeps the variance decision in play where you have the single-family and the multifamily, and then the other one is getting demo, is, is getting demoed.
Why did you not ask for temporary relief in the first place? Why did you avoid a temporary ask? Why did you avoid the draft notice that Jennifer Batters be forwarded to you, which suggested a temporary level of relief?
I think we were afraid we had to de-lead the house.
Well, we're, we're concerned, I think I'll follow up with Megan.
I'm sorry, did you just say you were thinking to de-lead the house?
Yeah, we were, we were afraid we would have to.
So here's one of the concerns is if they're going to temporary delay, say you give them a year delay, and the people in there who have now a new baby said, we're going to be here for six months, then they could have been told, well, potentially there's, they painted the house, you may have to de-lead the property. So now they're deleting a property, knowing that they're going to be demoing in six months. So you spent a ton of money. So this again is catch 22 that they're trying to get out of.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. The fact that you, the fact that the argument is now being made, well, if the tenant's saying, you, what, you have some time to at least know that your tenant was pregnant. So there's that.
No.
There, there's that one bit. But now you're sitting here saying, well, if we have to temporarily keep the property in order for us to get our occupancy, in order for us to deal with our financial aspect, we're then going to throw on twenty-five thousand dollars more worth of financial aspect, financial debt to de-lead the property and then we're going to want to keep the property. That's why we ignored any temporary issues and went for a permanent. So it's not trying to find a temporary situation. Now it's wanting a permanent situation because of the added financial cost of a potential de-lead.
But, but, but understand, we've heard from the board.
So which is it?
The board is, the board is saying, what I'm hearing from the board is that that is not acceptable. That is not what you want to do. So what they were looking to do is requesting a demo delay and being in their house. That's all they're looking for. They, we understand completely where you're coming from. The, the deviate from that is not where the board and the neighbors even want to be. So I think the applicant is fine moving forward with that and taking, taking that off the table. So if, if we need to modify that to request this, we were glad to do so.
But you apparently, from what our chairman just said, ignored, ignored the temporary route.
We're, we're trying, the people are in financial chaos. They're stressed out to the nineties. They're could be looking at financial ruin. So they're trying every aspect they can to resolve this issue.
And every aspect would have been coming to us with a temporary request, which you ignored because you knew, you knew the potential. That's not what the application is though.
But I, we have, I, I'm here to see what the board is to say. We've now. But I, we have, I, I'm here to see what the board is to say, we've now said, the board said, no, that's not what we wanna, what we wanna do, that's not what we're working, so now the applicant is saying, can we do that then? Can we do this?
So you didn't get what you want, now you wanna go to the next thing.
And that's being reasonable, if, if, this is what happens when you say, that's not what we wanna do, because we wanna move into a temporary position.
No, I understand, but you, you wanted, we told you you could have half a mile. You said, no, I wanna go for the mile, and when you're hearing you're not getting the mile, you'll go back to the half a mile.
But.
And so originally, it was you came in because you needed the relief because of COVID, because of the financial aspect and the financial ruin. But then it comes further that, well, if we have to do, you know, hold on to the house temporarily, we're gonna have to de-let it, that means we're putting money into it, we don't wanna demo it after that, so that's why we're looking for the permanent.
What we're asking for.
So I don't know about the other members of the board, um, but that is frustrating for me.
It's, if not living in a house is frustrating for these people, that they have, they have a lot of problems with them right now. This is a very difficult situation for them.
Paul?
So, well, well, everyone else gets to go home to their house at night, these people don't get to go to their house. That's the problem we have here.
Mr. Kusia.
Can you explain to me, I was unaware, what was this temporary solution that was offered to these people? Explain that to me, I, I'm totally unaware of that, until you just mentioned it, what happened?
So what the, um, the, uh, look, the, the application came in and it took a little bit of figuring out, it took a little bit of work. I had to talk with Jen, I had to talk with Paul, in order to try to understand, um, what the end game came, seemed to be, that a problem getting tenants out, and they need to keep that structure, that residential structure, which was, um, which was demolished. The board voted to all structures, you gotta get rid of one of them. So there were going to be three for a short period of time, but you gotta get rid of one of the. It took, it took some figuring out, but Jen and I collaborated, um, but in order to put together a notice that essentially said for six months, you can keep three residential structures, at the end of those, one of the structures has gotta go, or we've probably even identified the same family, one of the families.
So in effect, that would really be putting a, a gun to the man's head if you couldn't get the tenant out, right?
Well.
I mean, to, to, to use a figure of speech, I would change it a little bit more to suggest that there is a deadline.
Yeah, I, I understand, I under, you're giving them a drop dead date, I understand that.
That's what the applicant is definitely willing to do.
I understand that, mm-hmm. It's a very unfortunate situation, this thing here, it's very unfortunate, I, 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 I wish there was an easy answer. Once again, open the courts.
I agree with you.
I can't imagine a universe in which the zoning administrator forwards a suggested notice to be published, which offers temporary, temporary, third, temporary relief to an applicant who has already been before the board twice, and has petition, and what the applicant did instead was put in whatever notice it felt like. So there is not, there is not a chairman sitting here that suggests that this is an applicant that is acting in any way in good faith, none.
Do we have a, the people are in, have suit, a completely stressful situation going on right now, they're trying every.
Which is why the chairman offered the original solution, the chairman offered, because it's chairman, just like every other member of this board, understands the situation, which is why he put in the extra work and time along with Jennifer, to come up with exactly what it was you needed, not wanted, what you needed. And that work was ignored to get what you wanted.
Yeah, ma, I'm not sure exactly what happened back the, the, that day, so I, I'm coming along after the situation has happened here, what, what the application and what, what transpired, so I understand completely where you're coming from. But I, I, what I'm trying to help these people is like, explain to them, this, the, the, the best solution is to do what the chair recommended, and what you're recommending is to get this temporary demo delay and be able to move in a house, asking for anything else.
What the chairman, what the chairman originally offered and was ignored.
No, but that, again, I, I'm not, I wasn't there that day when they did that.
And I understand, I understand you might not have been privy to those emails, but you were just told.
Pardon?
You were just told what transpired, and what transpired was people put in extra work, and it was ignored.
And, and what I'm trying to do today is to follow that guidance, because that's what should have been happened, and for these people, they had to move forward and do what they need to do, and that's, you know, I understand where the chair's coming from, that, that was something that they probably should have done.
I think, I think that since the board appears to be going around in circles with the applicant, or the applicant appears to be going around in circles with the board, we should read a little bit of the, of the testimony that has been, just maybe a little bit, just be leafing through my inbox. Jennifer, if I, you know, if you have a catalog of this stuff, just kind of follow along behind me. I'm just going to go in order, starting back on, every third. I have an email from, uh, Barry Ann Fitzgibbons. Battersby, Ms. Battersby, my name is Barry Ann Fitzgibbons-Alonso, and I live on Wentworth Avenue. I grew up on Ferber Avenue, 49th and 54th Ferber Avenue, and have lived in Northand over my entire life. I'm writing to state my opposition to approving the second variance for 5557 Ferber Avenue. We, the neighborhood, did not oppose the first requested variance, because we took it in good faith that they would honor their word and follow through with the regulations of taking the single-family house down before moving in. However, that is not the case. They are now being dishonest about the current circumstances of their tenants, and asking for an exception to be made. Then number four, he is employed, contrary to what the variance request states, the variance request states, having five units on that one property is unacceptable and irresponsible. The Larkins are again asking us to have good faith, but if not proven, they can earn it. Who is responsible for overseeing and approving the conversion of the three to a two family? How will we be able to assure that it happens? We already trusted that they would do the right thing, follow the guidelines, but they failed to do so. If they already can't get the family in the back out, how will they renovate the three family without displacing the families that are in there? Will this happen before they receive occupancy permits as it should? If we grant them this variance in good faith and they don't follow through, which parenthetically seems to be their pattern, what are the consequences? Will the rules be updated to never allow the three family converted to a two family to be converted back to a three family? There are far too many questions in this variance request that can't be answered. The original plan should be the final plan, and they should tear down the back single-family before being granted occupancy permits for the new single-family. I am afraid that if we don't follow through with this, we are setting a precedent. I am afraid if they are granted their occupancy permit before the other units are adjusted, they will not follow through, and then claim that they are unable to remove the families, what would happen then? To be clear, my family and I are opposed to approving this variance. We urge you to adhere to the original agreement and have the back house knocked down before they're allowed to move in. And in the future, perhaps the planning board should consider having the conditions of the agreement met before ground is broken on new properties, and avoided. That's from Barry Ann Alonso, 25 Wentworth Avenue. Going to, forward to read the next, we can address any points in the whole one. Okay, this one is from, uh, Steve Turlia. Hello, we are writing to express our opposition to the variance request for property at 5557 Ferber Ave. We currently reside at 4 Wentworth Avenue and feel as though the building that was supposed to be removed will decrease our property value if this variance is granted. When the original request was made by the Larkins, they agreed to have only two buildings on the lot. This is why we didn't oppose it originally. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Stephen, uh, I'm gonna butcher it again, Buterlia, Buterilla. And then we have another one, this is from Julie Desmond, it looks like. Good morning, it has come to my attention that 5557 Ferber Ave has applied for a modification of their building permit. The original permit called for the tear down of the two of the three original structures, a two-family home and a shed, which were not, which we were not opposed to. With the modifications to the permit, it allows for those structures to stay, and this is the neighborhood. This structure is big, too big for the neighborhood, parenthetically, but with the five rental property on the same lot, it will depreciate our neighborhood value. Renters are just not as vested in the neighborhood as seen already with the multiple cars and the garbage. I'm not against this family, I am against the going back on their word to remove those structures. I oppose the modification of the building permit, thank you, Julie and John Desmond, they're on Highland View Ave. Next one, my name is Russell Mercier, I live at 41 Summit Street, Northand over Massachusetts. I am in a butter directly behind the newly constructed house on the property at 5557 Ferber Ave. I'm writing to object to the changes proposed on this property. On the first meeting of this project in November of 2019, diagrams of both the property and new house construction showed first, the new house was to have a garage underneath with two levels of living space above it. It appears what was built was a garage and three living areas above. This house is not what we were expecting or promised, and it towers over many homes in the area. Second, this board was concerned about the amount of driveway for both the new house and the existing building, and a water runoff was a concern. You asked to have the amount of driveway and parking area reduced and a water gathering system installed at the end of the driveway. They came back to the next meeting and proposed changes, and these changes were agreed upon. The driveway for the new house was installed in November of 2020, and what was put down is much larger than agreed upon. How do we know if the water gathering system was actually installed? Shortly after the driveway was installed, we had a large rain event that pooled a large amount of water and dirt in front of my property and sent a river of water and mud down Summit Street to some driveways. Again, not what was promised. Now they wanna change the project again. We were promised the older single home on the back of the property and the garage would be taken down before an occupancy permit was issued. This was promised to us three different times before this board, and now we're in the bottom of the eighth inning, and they want to change the rules. As far as the COVID eviction moratorium goes, it is expected to expire on March 31st, 2021, a month and a half away. If you approve, if you approve this change, we'll be looking at this building forever, not for the short period of time. If the front building is going to be made into two apartments, someone will have to be evicted. If it would help with their lender, can we allow the owners of the new house to get their occupancy permit and get an absolute binding agreement to take down the old house and garage 60 days after the moratorium is lifted? This is not about how many people are living on a property, or how many units there are. It's about the footprint of the property and the promises made, promises that should be kept. I urge this board to stick to the original decision on this project, not allow these changes. Thank you, again, that was from Russell Mercier. Hello, email, Russell, I'm just cruising through. I have another letter, this one is from Gary and Tracy Hall at 54 Ferber Avenue. In regards to the zoning board appeal filed by Megan and Brandon Larkin for 5557 Ferber Ave. When the property was first bought, I spoke with Brandon in November, and he assured me that they would be visiting all the neighbors to show them what they had planned for the property before any paperwork was filed. The following May, we found out that they had already filed for a building permit back in January, almost five months prior to discovering that they had filed, and no attempt was made to talk to the neighbors prior to filing. Then they came around to all the neighbors saying they would like to live on the street and would build a single-family, demolish the back single-family house and the garage, they would also do upgrades to the front three-family house. We all agreed to this plan and attended the meetings. We were assured the new house would blend in with the surrounding neighborhood, and they proceeded to build this tower of a house with two dormers, which was not on the plans we were shown. It was supposed to have two floors and a walk-up attic, it's actually a walk-up finished third floor. They have slept in the house on at least two occasions without an occupancy permit on 13021 and 2521, and had multiple people over at the house on both of those occasions, they were entertaining, they were not working on the house. Spots is below to the appeals, number one, we are against them getting any occupancy permit prior to the rear single-family and garage being demolished, which was what was agreed upon in order to obtain the building permit in the first place. She claims the tenant is unemployed, but I spoke to him, he said he is very busy with work as a mechanic and gave no indication of being unemployed. The fact that the construction loan is now due has nothing to do with not being able to tear the single-family house down and move into their new house. I'd like to know how tearing down the existing single-family has anything to do with paying their loan? Is there a pile of money stashed in the walls? Uh, number two is not applicable. Number three is keeping the single-family home and reducing the three-family to a two-family will require evicting four families. When they aren't able to evict even one family at this time, it is ridiculous and will also cost a lot of money, which they do not have, as they are not able to cover the loan for the house they just built. And then from the supporting statement section, number one, the lot size is 20,348 square feet. The R4 lot side requirement is 1,500 per dwelling, so in reality, they don't even have enough space for two houses, never mind three, which is why we fought and only agreed to this building of the new house if tearing down the single-family and garage would be part of the permit. The new house is very out of place in the neighborhood, towering over the neighbors' houses. Number two, it is not about how many units, but the fact that they do not have the square footage for the number of houses on the lot, which tearing down the house and garage was the only reason we agreed to the existing plan. Number three, we are sorry for the inconvenience of not being able to tear down the house and the garage. The construction loan was coming due upon completion, whether the house came down or not. He's a builder, and is hiding behind her name as she grew up in town, he's well aware of how this all works. Number four, the modification would just be another slap in the face of the neighbors as they tried to sneak in three new dwellings without bringing to show us as he promised. If the variance or extension is granted, we will be right back here with another change of plans when the time is up. If they were going to be transparent with all the neighbors, they would have come to all of us and asked for our support in getting an extension. Their word is no good with any of the neighbors, as they seem to do whatever they want and are no longer welcome to the neighborhood due to the lies and deceit. I have pictures of the cars of the new house, both nights and mornings listed above, that they slept in this new house, and his reputation as a builder is that he will play the system every chance he gets. My wife Tracy and I are completely against any change or extension or granting of occupancy permit until they tear down the existing single-family home and garage. Honestly, not sure why the building department didn't require that be done prior to construction of the new house. Sincerely, Gary and Tracy Hall, 54 Ferber Avenue. Here comes another one, I, I'm almost at the end, I think there are only two left. Hello, my name is Kevin Fitzgibbons, and I'm the direct neighbor of 5557 Ferber Avenue. I am writing to express my opposition to the variance that the owner is requesting. I feel that it is unnecessary to make those changes, and that the original agreement should be upheld. Please let me know if you have any other questions or concerns, and I'd be happy to answer them. As a side note, they're staying overnight on the weekends and spend the majority of the day there. What is the consequence for this zoning violation? Signed, Kevin Fitzgibbons, 49, Ferber. Last one according to my inbox. Good evening, ZBA, I am writing on behalf of, this is from David Valetta, 37 Summit Street. Good evening, ZBA, I'm writing on behalf of the Ferber Street variance modification request currently before this board. It should be noted, the applicant has invested a great deal of money in the approved project. Furthermore, the applicant has developed and built an exemplary and professional dwelling. The applicant now seeks a modification to stabilize financing in order to complete the project, which condition has been necessitated by a situation, specifically government regulation changes resulting from the current COVID viral epidemic, all beyond the applicant's control. As such, this board should accept the applicant's modification request to ensure completion of the, excuse me, to ensure completion of the proposed project. As in a butter, only one lot removed, I wish to support the applicant in acquiring all the necessary financing to continue her work in completing the project as planned, which will be to the benefit of all stakeholders. Sincerely, David Valetta, 37 Summit Street. And I think that's everything, speaking to Jennifer Battersby, I think that's everything I have, Jen, do you have, has anything else come in?
I have a few more that have come in, um, just a few quick comments from some of the same butters.
Do, would, would you mind reading them?
Absolutely, so, okay, this is, uh, Barry Ann Alonso, um, she's stating there is no COVID issue, the tenant says they have not been asked to move. Okay, I have another one. Barry Ann Alonso again, can you please mention that they have not followed the rules and have been sleeping overnight? I have a question from Kevin Fitzgibbons, hi, if they can't get the. Hi, if they can't get the guy in the back out, how will they get three people out of the three families to renovate? Barry Ann Alonzo again, they are not being honest, the tenant reports differently. They have an apartment to stay in, their money problems do not merit a complete change in rules. Barry Ann also states there were never five units, it was always four. And a couple more from Barry Ann. There is no hardship with the Larkins. They have apartments they can stay in, they stay overnight on the weekends in their new house. The tenants have not been asked to move, they haven't lost their jobs, and they don't have an infant. And one last one. They already sleep there, this is from Barry Ann again. They already sleep there, they already occupy it, can someone ask them about that? How would the building inspector demolish a building with people living in it? And that is the last, oh, hold on, I think one more just came in. Yes, I just received one more. This is from Alice Sheen, comments from seventy Ferber Ave residents. Joseph Co Two, Alice Sheen, with respect to the latest variance for fifty-five fifty-seven Ferber Ave. We have read this supported documentation for this variance. While sympathetic to the current hardship, we are opposed to granting the variance. Our main concerns are in the neighborhood density and the quality of life, along with the bad precedent it sets. We are against granting the variance specifically for the following reasons. We do not believe it to be reasonable to have three buildings on a single lot. Not only does this set a bad precedent, but it may have a negative economic impact on neighbors' home prices as the neighborhood becomes a bit denser and less appealing. Number two, if the tenant was given a sixty days notice back in September, which assurances were in place at the time to provide the building would be vacated, especially during a pandemic that began as early as March. Why was the new construction allowed to proceed prior to the rear building being vacated and/or demolished without a guarantee being in place? Without the guarantee, construction should not have started, thus preventing the current hardship and burden now placed on the owner and the surrounding neighbors. Has the landlord attempted a settlement with the tenants to voluntarily leave or assisted in finding suitable housing elsewhere? Is moving to the front building an option? And number three, finally, we believe that approving this variance sets a very bad precedent and will open the door to future landlord entrepreneurs that want to bypass zoning restrictions by claiming financial hardship. The proper solution should be making sure controls and mechanisms are in place prior to getting into this specific situation. Thank you. That's not like that.
The end of them, well, thank you very much for ticking through those. I think I'd like to shift over to Paul Hutchins to see if he has any thoughts on some of the comments we received from the neighborhood.
This is Paul Hutchins. I don't have any evidence of that. If they're there on the weekend, I don't stay in town on the weekend and sit in front of people's houses, so. I did go by the other day when there was after a snowstorm, there was no cars there and there was no footprints. I have no evidence to that. But if they are doing that, that goes against our zoning bylaws, moving in without a certificate of occupancy. It's a three hundred dollar a day fine, every day is an occurrence. So that's, I guess that I have no evidence myself to but like I said, if they are doing it, it's obviously against our zoning codes, and they don't even have a final inspection yet, so it's it could be an unsafe house as far as we know on top of everything else, so hopefully they're not putting themselves in that jeopardy.
Good, thank.
I confirm it, Chair, all the bedrooms are vacant, there's no furniture in any of the bedrooms.
Excuse me, I'm trying to talk to Mr. Hutchins. Paul, there were some comments in the, in the butter letters regarding the size of the structure, you know, with any sense of the conformance of the structure to the plans?
They meet all the plans. We have an ASBelt, the building is in the location it is supposed to be in. We have not done a final on everything, so we don't know if the the water retention drain is in there or not. We have no way of knowing that now with the snow on top of it. So that's something that they're going to have to show before I can give them a certificate of occupancy, because that is in the original plan to catch that water racing down that driveway, not going onto Summit Street. So that's definitely a question. The gas, I mean, excuse me, the plumbing inspector has not done a final. That's pretty important to us, and I have not done a final on the building itself, and they have not even applied for a certificate of occupancy yet.
That's helpful to know where we are in the process. Thank you for that.
Well, I just have two questions for Mr. Hutchins. When you do the final, I'm assuming if there's dormers that aren't original to the plans we've provided, that will be picked up along with the size of the driveway? Are those two things that you double check?
Oh, for sure, you know, on the original plan. The size of the driveway, you do remember we did let them extend the house two feet, so we did push the driveway over two feet, because they still had to have the driveway going into the garage. So that's, that's the only thing that should have changed from the original plan is that they moved, they extended the house out two more feet, and that was approved.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul and Alexandria. While he's on the hot seat, do the other members of the board have questions for Mr. Hutchins? All right, seeing and hearing none, then we'll throw it back. It sounded like the applicant had some points to make. The floor returns to you.
Just to confirm with Mr. Chair that there is no furniture in any of the bedrooms in the house, so just that's a confirmation there. So again, I think, you know, back to your point there, I think all we're looking for is the temporary delay on the demolition and issue, so they can get the final CO on the property. I think that's what we're looking for, to follow that recommendation that you proposed at the very start there.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll ask Mr. Hutchins, can you actually perform your inspections and deliver a CFO with, you know, if the board were to grant relief that were, you know, a six-month demo delay, just in shorthand, is that something that allows you actually to even do the things you need to do?
Yes, I can issue it. I offered them a temporary, unfortunately, they said their bank would not take a temporary CFO. That was my first option to them, and like I said, the bank would not accept it. I would have felt more comfortable with that, we've done that on many buildings, because it's, I can okay a temporary with, as long as there's no life safety. A lot of buildings, you know, they can't do plantings and stuff like that. But I can, I can issue one once we get in there and finish our inspections.
I got you. Inspections, if we have two feet of snow, can you actually finish them, or are there, you know, more contingency processes?
I think that him being in the business, they probably have, they can move and show how they did the drainage. I think we could still arrange that to be inspected.
Right.
You're saying seeing the drainage, right, not just looking at pieces of paper showing where it's supposed to be?
Absolutely, we have to see the physical drainage and how it works.
No, if you're going to, if it would be issuing the occupancy and not temporary for us to do something like a six-month delay for demo, if we reach day sixty and that building's not demoed, what's the, I guess the question becomes is what recourse there?
That would have to be a legal side of it.
So you have no actual recourse?
I'm sorry?
You have no recourse, you can't, if we hit day, you know, day six month, and that building isn't coming down, you can't revoke the occupancy, you can't, you're not capable of doing anything.
I can revoke an occupancy.
I think you also, Chair, you had also the option to issue a fine as well, so it's not like there is no recourse, just as the building inspector said that.
This is already a stretch for me, because I'm, I'm already concerned with not only the letters from the butters regarding your tenant's finances, all of that, and granted, it's not from the tenant, so you take it with somewhat of a grain of salt. But getting fines to me doesn't really do much for me.
Three hundred dollars a day.
If this is something I would even be considering, then I would want the building inspector to have some kind of a final stern recourse, and that recourse he's telling me is revoking the occupancy, which means then you'd have to get out or you're getting fined.
I think the fine at three hundred dollars a day is nine thousand a month. I think for anyone, that's a stern, stern as it could be. I don't think, people think that nine thousand a month is not, you know, a damaging payment every month. I think it's definitely something that would someone take every effort to resolve and follow the condition.
Unfortunately, many things in this application haven't been followed, so I have to go on that.
Nine thousand a month, the building inspector is definitely has the authority to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Building Inspector.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the board have a question or comment for Mr. Hutchins?
So Paul, I have a quick question for you. So if the residents see that there is something during, during the middle of the week, and they contact you, and you can go during the week during your business hours to explore the possibilities of them there, or whatever the residents around the area have issues with.
They could contact me anytime, and I don't go out just during business hours when there is a complaint. I go out, I've been out at four o'clock in the morning, and I've been out at eleven o'clock at night to look at complaints, because that's when the complaint is being issued. So I do, I do take my job pretty serious here, and I think a violation of the certificate of occupancy is very dangerous for one thing, and like I said, I have no evidence. I'm not saying that they haven't been in and out of the house, they have every right to go in and out of this house and do painting or whatever they're doing, I have no idea. Like I said, I have never gone up and knocked on the door and asked them what they're doing. I've never seen a bunch of cars there myself. Like I said, I'm around on the weekend, but I can't say I've been by there a hundred times on the weekend, so I don't make it a point to drive by there, it's not really on the main path, so if they have that and they call me, I will respond.
Great.
And if there are dormers.
I'm sorry, I just want to let them know that, you know, because it seems like one of the concerns that is coming up over and over, that, you know, they're there, they're there, and I just want to let them know that there's, you know, you are there to help them as well.
For sure, like I said, like that, we have, you know, they could call my number, and like I said, and make a and just, you know, tell me, and like I said, if they, if they're there, then I'll go out then. I'm on twenty-four hour call unfortunately, and if they, if it's that concerning, and it is to me, that someone is occupied in a house that doesn't have certificate of occupancy, then it can't happen, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Any other members of the board, questions for the building inspector? Then I'll jump, I'll jump back in, Paul. Since we're talking about fines, and I would generally agree with the applicant, that three hundred dollars a day adds up in a hurry, a couple of days is often times no big deal, the cost of doing business. But, you know, the timeline we are on, when we're talking about, you know, the theoretical timelines that we're on with the theoretical eviction processes is certainly months on end. So the three hundred dollars a day becomes real money real fast. But my question to you, Mr. Hutchins, is do these violations certainly do have a cash value? And in the, in the cash world, all a debtor has to do is file bankruptcy in order to get that kind of stuff off the books. Does the, may the town put a lien against the house for value of building code violations? Or is that not a threat that we have?
No, they could put a tax lien on the property itself, so that there's nothing can be done with the property until these fines are paid.
Terrific, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
Can I just say one more thing, Paul?
Please do.
I think we all want them to move in their house and live in a nice house like this, and, you know, no one, it seems like they are getting beat up a little here, self-imposed or not, you know. They had a great plan, you know, they wanted to move in, she has a young kid herself. But it's just, you got to follow the process, and putting me in the middle of this and putting the blame on the building inspector is not appreciated, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Appreciate it, and generally speaking, the board certainly sees right through stuff like that, so you can consider your back covered at a minimum by me.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board for the building inspector? Then I'm going to throw it, throw it back to the applicant, because you have been, you've been on the sideline for quite a while, I'm sure you have some things that you'd like to, like to say, so that the floor is back to you.
I think, you know, ultimately, as the building inspector said, it is a difficult situation. It's for, you know, the board, for the building inspector, for the town. I think ultimately, if we, if they can, if they're able to move into the house and delay the demolition, I think that's will get us where we want to go, I think at the end of the day. I think that's what they're really looking to do, and if that's, the board can grant that, I think we can, everyone can move forward and feel a lot of pressure taken off them, and get this resolved, and everyone can move forward, I think. I think that's what your recommendation was at the start, so I think if that's, if they follow that, I think that's where, that would be the best solution here.
Can I just add something in? I just want to say that we're not bad people, we just want to live in this house, and it's been a tough year, and we are helping our tenants find a place. I'm texting them all the time. The wife doesn't have a job, the guy does have a job, he does have the job. So some of the things that are coming in, they're not true. And I text even the tenant today saying, here's a new place, look at this, she has a landlord help, I mean, a Realtor helping her. I'm not making stuff up, we're innocent in this, and I'm just, we simply just want to be in our house. And we're just stuck, we don't know what to do.
Thank you for that. So what I was hearing from the applicant is a modification of the ask to suggest in the, you know, in the simplest terms, just a six-month demo delay. What is hard for us is ordinarily, when we're sitting at a table, it's much easier to modify a decision and to get motions. Well, you know what, before we even get to that part, maybe I'll look up and down the table and ask one of the board members for their thoughts on changing this from a permanent variance, allowing the permanent residence of this third residential structure, and just turning it into, air quotes for shorthand purposes, a six-month demo delay. Is that something that resonates for us? Do we have comments, questions, concerns? So I'm looking up and down the table, anybody jump in?
Paul, can I ask a question as a board? Are we allowed to do that, or is that in the jurisdiction of just the building inspector?
Well, that's a fair question. So in my mind, all I'm offering is a variant that allows a third residential structure to stay for six months. And so after that, I don't think that we're necessarily ordering the demolition of the structure, but it can't stay there. So the jurisdiction of the board, if I'm repackaging the question into my answer, the jurisdiction of the board is to allow three residential buildings on the lot for six months. In the same breath, it makes sense for me to return to Mr. Hutchins and ask, is, in your mind, Mr. Hutchins, is that, you know, shooting a fly with an elephant gun? Or do we just need, you know, is there a, an administrative thing under your umbrella that is a six-month demo delay that does the same thing? Or do we actually need to return to a modification of this decision?
Well, it was a, it was a zoning board decision to allow this, and with that stipulation that this house should come down. No one ever saw thought that, you know, we'd get this COVID and it did put a snafu into a lot of things and a lot of people are hurting from it. There's no doubt about it. So I think we all need to be a little sensitive on that and we are, you know. But in my in my opinion, that's what we I talked to the town attorney, you talked to her. That was what we proposed was giving a six-month delay once Governor Baker lifts the eviction being. I was for that from the start and then it got changed in the legal notice. So I'm still for it and I and I I think it could work, but they got to realize that if it doesn't work, it's it goes to the three hundred dollar a day fine because I will retract their certificate of occupancy. So that's kind of where I stand right now myself.
Okay. Thank you for that. So I'm I'm again going to look up and down the table and ask the board members for their feedback on, you know, modifying this. The applicant is on board.
So if I might ask, assuming that this six-month permit is given, what hap- so the 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 original proposal included reducing the occupancy of one of the buildings. Is that staying in? Does does those tenants stay? I would assume the tenants would stay, which would mean that we're increasing the occupancy for six months of the property.
But I I don't know if I'm hearing the question that you're asking, but the answer I'll offer is the property stays just like it is for the next six months.
Okay. Yeah, that that answers my question.
Is it six months after the it's lifted, the fans list lifted? So six months starting after March?
I beg your pardon. That's that's an excellent point. Thank you for the for that. Yes.
If it gets extended, it's going to be added into that. So say Governor Baker comes in and extends it till it the end of April. So is it the clock going to start at the end of April?
Right.
It just needs to be clarified.
I don't agree with that. And I say that because I I say that because the moratorium is for landlords trying to evict tenants who are not wanting to leave. And I think we have to remember that's not the situation here. This is not a situation where tenants are squatting saying, we're not going anywhere. These are tenants who were willing to leave. So I don't see where the moratorium might have an effect where they can't get into court and force them out quicker. But they're not, the tenants aren't holding their breath to the moratorium.
So then are you repackaging? So then would you suggest that let's let's not do six months from the date the moratorium is lifted? Let's just say three months from now.
I'd say I'd say four months from now and set a demo date, not a four months from now. You know, whatever, the occupancy is pulled, four months from now, and then bam, this day demo has to start. And I don't care on what property. But there's two structures because we have to take into consideration what we have heard from all of the butters in the sense of, I'm not talking about the tenant having a job, not having a job, having a baby, not having a baby, live staying there, not staying there. I'm talking about these butters participated in all the prior meetings and were handed what now to them feels like a bag of goods. And we need to take that into consideration. And so I would say not from the moratorium. If you want to do four months, your occupancy is pulled, fine, but set a date for the occupancy to be pulled and a demo to be done. I don't want, you know, six months from here and then the occupancy or six months from here and you have to do demo. Firm date.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is a firm date, you know, make it up as we go along June first or something. And as a condition, the demo must commence by date, date.
What's that?
Would the would the devil in the concept in the structure that you're concepting for us? You know, we're we're building the aircraft as we're flying here. Are you suggesting that the commencement of demolition should be the same date as for getting a tenant out?
I mean, it's it's hard. It's hard to split them. And I guess one question that kind of comes to mind is I'm assuming the the single family they were originally going to demo also has an occupancy permit. So I don't see why the building inspector couldn't pull the occupancy permit and it be demoed. But I think you have to set, you have to set the dates probably the same. Because what are we talking about? We're talking about a demo. We're not talking about getting tenants out and then a demo.
Where are they though, do we?
But we're not because whether your tenants move or not, you're getting a a date certain of a property of being demoed. It can be the multifamily. It can be the single family. It can be the new construction. Something.
Wow. So because of COVID.
I mean, that's no, no, you have to understand. And if you're not realizing this, I'll explain it. No matter what extension you're given, whether it's a four months, a three months, or a six months, you are basically being told you have six months. Six months and either you're going to get fined three hundred dollars a day because your occupancy permit is being pulled. That's it, period. And you just said yourself, nine thousand dollars a month is a pretty hefty price to pay. So being shocked or surprised by this shouldn't be because this is exactly what you're telling us you want. You want an extension and at that extension, at that date certain, there's no coming back. This is it. The the neighborhood is getting what the neighborhood was told they were going to get a year ago. That's what you're asking for when you ask for a six-month extension.
We didn't have COVID a year.
But what I'm saying is, what is it? Because you seem surprised when I just said a date certain and a property is coming down. It doesn't matter what, something's coming down. What do you think is going to happen after six months? You're going to come back to the board and ask for another six-month extension?
No, I think the the reasonable thing is the chair and the other members said is within six months of lifting the relief.
No, because this isn't this is your your sister, sister-in-law, the applicant herself stated, this is not an issue where tenants are holding on to the moratorium to not move. That is not the case here. So I don't see why we should. I don't. I don't see why the moratorium moratorium has any place. Your tenants, the tenants are not holding on to it. They are not saying to you, well, we're in a moratorium. You can't kick us out, so we're just going to sit here. That's not what they're doing.
They haven't given any any notice to us saying that they are moving out at all.
Whoa, 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 whoa. The tenants were moving out in December.
Hey Alexandria.
Flip-flop.
Alexandria, I need.
A few there. We requested that the tenants.
Mr. Larkin, Alexandria, I'm going to interrupt. We don't have any more time for this, frankly. We've got another application that's in queue here. We are going around in circles. We're still talking about the same nonsense we were talking about an hour ago. So therefore, I'm just going to be moving this along. Alexandria, are you proposing that we do a four months from today? And if this is not something that the applicant wants, you ask continuance next month, or you can say, let's not put there any number of things that the applicant can do. But the what I am doing now is we're going to be advancing towards some kind of final action, whether it be a continuance to March or we're going to go to a vote. So.
Four months from today.
Four months from today, which is
So that's.
Two, nine, two, one. It takes, you know, it takes like a couple of weeks for appeal periods and all that kind of stuff. So I would add that by fourteen days and call it just two twenty-three. February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one and four months from that, you said? So Ju- June twenty-third?
June twenty-third for a demo.
So we will allow three residential structures until June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, and the condition of that of allowing that variance is that demolition must start by June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
That's what I'm proposing.
Any thoughts from the?
Well, on the the practical side of that, before they do demo, they have to after the tenants move out, they they need some time to disconnect utilities and do hazmat testing and removal before they get the demo permit, I think. So they I don't think the demolition would actually start four months.
Can can they start the demo? Walk me through this if you don't mind. Do they come to the town and say, we want to be able to demo and start the process?
They can apply for a demo permit right now.
Okay, so they can apply for a demo permit right now and have it already set up that May twenty-third, the town comes out if need be, or May twenty-third, utilities get shut off and everything. So they can have everything lined up for a June twenty-third demo day without the tenants actually being gone.
They can apply for everything and get approved and be ready with a shovel in the ground, ready to knock it down.
I think Mr. Kili is a correct point there. I think he's so once the the once they say the tenants move out, say they move out June first, I think we then request, you know, all the different utilities that come out at that point. So I think Mr. Kili is is right on that date. So we will be, but that will be part of the demolition process, though. That would be part of it.
Well, all of that can be, from what I'm just being told by the building inspector, all of it can be done and set up to put a shovel in the ground on the twenty-third.
They can apply for a a demo permit, right? The there's there's eight things in there. The utilities have to be shut off. So there is correct that the utilities can't be shut off until obviously until they move out. So those have to be inspected to make sure they're turned off, power and everything else. So we're giving them a guideline on the twenty-first to start knocking it down. I think we need to pull that number back a little bit and say that the tenant has to be out by a certain time so that does give you that room to get those inspections in there to get all the utilities turned off.
My concern is that we as a board and and I agree with you. I a hundred percent agree with you. My concern becomes is as a board, us saying tenant must be out by the twenty-third holds no legal weight to the tenant. So I guess my concern becomes is that if we sit here and say tenant needs to be out by May twenty-third, the applicant is going to be able to come back and say, sorry, we couldn't get the tenant out, so now we need to postpone demo. And that's a complete concern. I don't want I don't want a butters having to constantly take their time to write letters, pay attention to hearings. I want, and I guess I sit here and say, this is on the applicant then. If you have a demo day set the twenty-third, your tenant needs to be out the first so that between the first and the twenty-third, all of the inspections can be completed to have a demo. And don't get me wrong. I don't think anyone on the board is going to bat an eye if, you know, an inspection couldn't be done until the twenty-second, so the shovel doesn't go on the ground until the twenty-four. But I'm not sure we have any any actual weight over over the tenant.
Well, the weight that we do have, though, Alexandria, the pinch point that the applicant, though, if you if you set a due date, then it's up to the applicant to find a way to get the tenant out, and it does not have to be an eviction proceeding. Landlords around the Commonwealth of the country have been known to incent tenants to move out with, they'll pay the first rent or something ludicrous like in their new place.
Right.
I'm reasonably confident that our applicant, who is a person of the world, wise in the ways and doesn't want to be facing three hundred dollars a day, will find a way to get this tenant who is willing to move to actually move if we put the fire under the butt such as suggesting.
That's correct, Chair.
So twenty-third?
Twenty-third, you're suggesting June, June twenty-third is the.
June twenty-third. You it's a Wednesday. You said to give time for the decision to be in. So that gives that's two weeks from that's four months, two weeks from today.
And do you want to include a condition that the demo permit must be applied for, you know, perhaps by the end of this month?
Yes. That would be an excellent idea.
Hello, Paul?
Yes.
Paul, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Paul, in my opinion, this is total madness. Total, total madness, Paul. I think your suggestion of six months from the day the of COVID emergency expires, when the man is allowed to evict somebody, okay, is a perfectly common sense, good idea. Putting a man, okay, putting a gun, not a gun, a howitzer to this guy's property after what they're going through. This is madness, total madness. Alex, usually I'm on the same side as you are. I don't know where you're coming from.
Alan, I would.
I understand the tenant's concern, not the tenant's, I understand the neighbor's concern, okay? This man is in this position because of this COVID, okay? He's not allowed to forcibly evict somebody because of the situation. Okay, once this emergency is, no, no, Alex, okay, you kept running. Okay, give me a chance to talk, okay? Once this emergency is over, now you put the clock on. Okay, I have no problem with the clock on after the emergency is over, okay? He didn't make the COVID uh uh thing with with the ban on evictions, okay? He's he's being forced to live with it, just like I'm being forced to live with with it with one of my tenants. But to put a four-month thing is total madness. We're opening up the town to a mega lawsuit. If this guy has a good lawyer, he's going to sue the hell out of the town. Okay, you're going to go and knocking down people's houses, okay? Come on, Alex. It's total madness.
No, 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 no. No, I'm the town not knocking. The town is not knocking down a house. They have a choice. They give up their occupancy permit or they demo the property. That's the first thing. The second thing is I would be a hundred, no, hold on. I would be a hundred percent on board with you that my idea is insane and out of this world, ridiculous, if the tenants were squatting. But the applicant herself said they were going to move in December. They are not using the moratorium. And I sit here and say to you, what happens if the moratorium gets continued? And then all of a sudden, we're here, we're back here a year and a half later, a year and a half later, possibly.
Wait, 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 one minute. The only way that we can assure this is that this man goes to court, okay? And he gets a court order to evict this guy. And then we know the guy is going to move out.
They're not going. Alan, Alan.
Let's put it to a vote. Okay, we all know where we're coming from. Okay, all the other board members are there. Like Paul said earlier, we're going around and around. We're wasting time. There's another thing.
Well, the applicant has to decide whether they want to vote. They have to decide whether they want to.
Your motion to a vote and Paul and let's end this. Are we going to be here till one o'clock in the morning? It's total madness.
Excuse me, Paul. I have a few more comments. I don't I don't know if the public comment is closed now.
I I'm sorry, I I appreciate all that. I think that the board is coming to a destination here and we do need to move along because we have another application. I have heard a willingness from the applicant to accept the terms. He hasn't said so, but I have not heard a battle from the applicant that a, you know, four months lets consent the tenant to move out. Haven't heard any of that. So what I am doing presently is trying to put together a motion that I will email to somebody on our side to read and see if that gets us where it gets the board where it needs to be in order to move this application along. Because I think what we have is we've got an enormous problem during an enormous time and it's an unprecedented era. I'm not hearing from the applicant. I've heard the applicant suggest that COVID is an issue, but at the same time, we have not heard that the tenant in place is citing COVID as an issue. The tenant is employed, just can't find another place to live, which doesn't sound like it's having anything to do with the COVID or a moratorium. So moratorium aside, it's time the applicant, if it wants to avoid three hundred dollars a day in fines, to put its money where its mouth is. If it wants the CFO to save the project in order to get the financing, the applicant will find a way to get this done. I have expectation that a man of Mr. Larkin's expertise, whether whatever opinions folks may have of the way that he does things, he's going to find a way to get this thing done. Then he's going to be back in front of this board or he's going to find some other method. Is he going to find an attorney to sue the town because because I don't know what the suit would be, but it sounds like the applicant didn't get the relief it wants, so it's going to sue the town? Well, that happens time, so I'm I'm not.
You're going to knock down the house.
So that that being said, perhaps while I while I pen this, maybe maybe there's a maybe there's a good opportunity, Jen. If you would recite a couple of things that you've had come in and I will try to some typing you do.
Okay, another one from Kevin Fitzgibbons. How can you guarantee that the tenant will be out?
I think what we've covered is a three hundred dollar a day fine.
And then one other one from Barry Ann saying nine thousand dollars a month is nothing with their rental income. is nothing with their rental income. Um, a couple people say, um, Kevin Fitzgibbons, why can't we table it until March? I think I have one more. Okay, um, this is a few paragraphs. Um, Mike McNally, um, we would like to share our concerns with the variance request, um, to be addressed during the meeting. Um, allowing both of the single-family houses along with apartments to be occupied will be detrimental to our neighborhood and overburden the municipal services. The approval to build the new single-family house predicated upon the removal of, of the existing single-family house, this original agreement should remain and not be allowed to change now that they have built the other house. Their change request will not change the number of units, but most likely will increase the number of occupants to an already busy area of our neighborhood, again, overburdening the municipal services. The comparison of the eight A and eight B charts is misleading as the three thousand square foot house is not legally able to be occupied, so should not be considered as an existing building when comparing it to the proposed plan. The only way the new house should be considered is when you don't consider the existing house as legally. Both cannot be occupied today, and that should remain the case. Also, there has been no mention of the existing garage in eight A or anywhere else, which is supposed to be removed. This additional garage should not be allowed to remain on the property. Keeping the existing single-family house permanently could further increase the occupancy of the lot, as the older house is quite large and could become home to many more family members. I don't believe the twelve thousand, the twelve hundred square foot house, um, twelve hundred square feet is counting the full existing house, maybe just the part they are renting out now. How do they plan to turn the existing three apartments into two by simply not using one of them? I doubt that. By turning the three small apartments into two larger apartments, they will more than likely also increase the occupancy overall. As these apartments are quite small, the occupancy is traditionally three to six people, two people maximum per apartment, but turning them into two larger apartments will more than likely also raise the occupancy to eight people. It's an inconvenient situation for the family not being able to move into their new house, but that's the agreement that they made previously, and it's not that significant of a hardship compared to many others dealing with death, job loss, et cetera, during the pandemic. It's simply a delay. They're, um, sorry, they are not able to move the tenants out, the single-family house through the pandemic, but how do they expect to do so with one of the apartment tenants? I believe they will have the same issue unless they have an agreement. Finally, the new house was said to be a two-story single-family house, and we realized that legally it is, but in reality, it's a three-story house, the top level is open to the rest of the house, not closed like an attic or walk-up. I disagree with their statement that the houses do not look out of place, as the new house is the largest house in the neighborhood by far, and one looked at another north end of our neighborhood, but it looks quite out of place in our older neighborhood. Regards, Lauren McNally.
Thanks for that, Jen. Uh, so I have the email addresses that I had handy were Alexandria and Ron. I forwarded to you language. I'm, I'm unable, Mr. Clerk, to forward language to you because I don't think I have an email address for you. So unfortunately, this is taking it out of your, your hands. I apologize for that in an effort to move things along. Alexandria and Ron, would you take a look at what I presented?
Paul?
Yes, sir.
Paul, you want to email me something? You can email me. I'll, I'll, I'll put my laptop on. You can email me at A L C U S C I A at gmail dot com.
All right, on its way.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm, I am reading this.
Paul, should those be four months and not six months?
Sure.
Oh, wait, no, applicant requested three residential buildings per lot for six-month period and one residential building per lot allowed.
Yeah, I need to, I do. Can, can you fix that, or do you want me to?
I can. I think that looks good.
Now, I think it looks good, good as well.
So Alan, Ron and Alexandria just sent a redraft, which changes the six-month, you know, air quotes here, six months to June twenty-third, consistent with the rest.
So you just sent me a new one?
Yeah. It's, it should be, it's on, well, I pressed go, but arrived.
I'm reading one that says until June twenty-third.
Yep, that's, that's the one.
Does the chairman make a comment?
Please do.
Um, could, could we try for a compromise and, um, do it for six months with the condition that the applicant then files the eviction complaint within the next two weeks as well? I think I'm trying to take into consideration the, the other board member's concerns as well, and, and both board members' concerns, but trying to make a split compromise.
I'm getting, I'm getting, I'm not going to speak, because I think she is reading or rereading. I'm, I'm not seeking to speak for her, just to fill the time, but I think that the compromise is already kind of, um, in process. If you end up needing more time, once again, return to the board, uh, with an application and ask.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Uh, yeah, Alan, uh, Paul, that looks good.
Mr. Kusia, has it, has it arrived?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I'm offset.
All right. Would, would you, uh, want to make the motion, Mr. Kusia?
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve a variance pursuant to the town and north end of a zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash four, three A, residence four district, to request that three residential buildings be allowed until June twenty-third, two thousand, twenty thou, two thousand and twenty-one, in order to demolish an existing single-family home and detached garage in the R four zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested three residential buildings per lot until June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. One residential building per lot allowed, but a variance was previously granted, allowing two buildings on one lot. The relief variance needed is one additional residential building until June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one.
Conditions?
Oh, conditions, apply for a demolition permit by February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, commence demolition by June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Is that it?
That is, I think, look, kind of looking up and down the, uh, down the table here. Um, board have an appetite for a second?
I'll second.
I heard two seconds, and I didn't identify either voice.
It was Ron and Alexandria.
All right, mo, motion made by Mr. Kusia, seconded by, um, uh, Ms. Jacobs. I'm going to go up the roll. Alexandria?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mr. Kusia?
No.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
I am an I, so four to, four to one, the variance, um, passes. Thank you all for your work. A decision will issue. Just get into Mr. Applicant, just get in touch with, um, with Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
Please also don't forget the authorization.
Uh, that's, that's right. Jen, Jennifer.
I'll send it to Jen tomorrow then.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for all your time on this.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next and last item on the agenda, aside from adjournment, uh, is two eighty-one Middlesex Street. What we have received is a, uh, request for withdrawal of a petition without prejudice so that we can move on to the next one. So the petition that is being withdrawn is two thousand and twenty, petition number two thousand and twenty dash thirteen. Uh, and any discussion on that, or shall, or may we just vote to allow the applicant to withdraw the previous petition?
I make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the previous, uh, petition.
Thank you, Mr. Kusia. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Ron?
It was.
Thank you. Going up the roll, Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Mr. Kusia?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
And I am an I, so twenty, uh, petition number two thousand and twenty hyphen thirteen is withdrawn. And now we have a new petition. Mr. Clerk, would you mind, uh, actually, let's make sure, is, is the applicant here?
Uh, uh, Attorney Rick Byers.
Thank, thank.
Uh, representing the applicant.
We'll have Mr. Kusia, uh, open the hearing, and then we'll do, uh, introduction. Mr. Kusia, the floor is yours.
Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven thirty PM to all parties interested in the petition of Joseph Stewart for property at two eighty-one Middlesex Street, MAP nine, parcel forty-seven, North Andover, Mass. oh one eight four five, in the R four zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash four point three point three, the conversion of an existing dwelling to accommodate not more than five residential units by special permit from zoning board of appeals in accordance with section one ninety-five dash ten point seven, for the purpose of converting a single-family home to a multifamily home. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point three yards setbacks and table two, summary of the dimensional requirements for one setback in the R four zoning district for the purpose of constructing a driveway, specifically. Applicant has requested a setback needing a relief variance of three point six feet. The setback proposed is fourteen point four feet, and the setback required is eighteen feet. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to the town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash eight point five point A, design standards for a minimum setback from lot line in the R four zoning district for the purpose of constructing a driveway, specifically. Applicant has requested a setback needing a relief variance of three feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review by appointment only at the office of the zoning department located at one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday from the hours of eight AM to four PM, Tuesday from the hours of eight AM to five thirty PM, and Friday from the hours of eight AM to eleven thirty AM, by order of the Board of Appeals. D. Paul Clark, Jr., Esquire Chairman.
I'm always tickled by the flourish at the end. Mr. Byers, would you come here?
Yes, I'm still, I'm still here, yes. Alexandria, by the way, when this started, you were putting your kids in your pajamas. I might have mine on now, but I, you can't see me, so. Anyway, uh, uh, so what, uh, if you recall, we were in front of you, um, well, by phone, uh, originally going to the three units, uh, the, the Stewart, you know, took your advice, and we reapplied, uh, asking now just to go to the two units. So it's a single-family going to a two unit. And, um, so that would be the special permit. And they actually flipped the garage. You could see it on the plan. The garage has been flipped, uh, so when you pull in, it's going to be straight, um, you know, come down the driveway, it'll be at the, uh, back, um, in the, or more in the middle of the backyard now. Um, so the only relief now would be on the setback, um, for the driveway, um, when you need, you need, um, eighteen feet. And we have fourteen four, um, on the side and a three-foot buffer.
So, Mr. Byers, this sounds like pretty much actually what the, the, the board and last month?
Yes.
Maybe it was two months ago, I've forgotten.
Well, last, yeah, actually.
All right, so I, I think the board has some familiarity with this. I am, I am, I apologize to everybody, um, but I am going to be kind of seeking to move this along because we've got to finish sometime. Um, comments from the board, questions from the board?
The only questions I have to say is I think he's done everything to accommodate us. That's all.
Actually, I'm going to agree with that, Alan. Um, it's not, it's more of a comment, not a question. I, I think, you know, the applicant took, uh, requests, um, pretty much, put it on paper and it's before us tonight.
I would agree with that one hundred percent.
I, I also am pretty happy with this. Uh, it definitely resolves the property issue we were discussing earlier.
Boy, we, we don't hear this a, we don't hear this a lot.
Okay, I agree too.
I want to relish.
Yeah, I, I don't use it there either.
The applicant did good.
Shall we just, shall we go right to a motion? Is, is there appetite moving this along?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, um, the, the application as submitted.
I second that.
I love it. Motion made and seconded. Um, uh, Ms. Jacobs?
You want me to, uh, to read it, Paul, first?
Not, I think at eleven o'clock, I think I'm ready to, to, you know, be approved.
Okay.
Submitted is, is going to be.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
Kusia?
Me? Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
And I am an I, so five O are approved, uh, as submitted.
Thank you.
Mercy. All right, well, I think that the, that, thank you very much, Mr. Byers, and, and the applicant for your patience. I think there, is there anything on the agenda or just adjournment, right?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Well.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. It was Paul and Alexandria, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Paul, Alexandria?
Yes.
Ellen?
Paul, Paul, can I say something?
No.
On adjournment? Uh, go, go ahead, Alan.
Do you think we should make reference of the plot plan and, and the diagrams that, that we just re, uh, approved, or you want to do that, uh, tomorrow?
I will, I can do that, um, uh, you know, to approve the application as submitted.
Hmm, okay.
Or, or actually, you know what? Jen does the heavy lift. She'll be putting pen to paper. I'll take a look at it, maybe not tomorrow, the next day.
Yeah, all, all I'm saying is I think we should make mention of all the, uh, the plot plan and, and the diagrams that were submitted, and that we accept all, all of the above, you know, dated and, dated and drawn by, you know, cross the T's and dot the I's.
Absolutely, yes.
That's all.
The motion was made and seconded. I believe that Al, Alex, start again, roll. Alexandria?
Uh, 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 yes. Oh, sorry, I thought I was on mute.
Just to adjourn. McIntyre?
Yes.
Kusia?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
I'm an I, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your work and tonight.